All right, call the order. Um, please everyone turn off their phone to silent and we'll start with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Ann, could you do the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, here.
Here.
Yes.
Here. All right.
I've assigned the cell phone.
I already asked to silence the cell phones, but I'll ask again. If you guys can silence your cell phones. Um, do we have any recognition?
Scott, did you ever call her? She's come on the agenda early. She may be stuck at first. Uh, Kristen, do we have any recognitions?
We do not.
All right, uh, there's nothing for the president to report out. So we go to superintendent reports?
No update on the curriculum. You will see, um, a course title change in the board agenda packet. Normally this goes through with the curriculum advisory council, uh, and that occurs in the fall, uh, before we put out the curriculum guide for the upcoming school year. Um, this was something that, as we looked at our success rate with our, one of our special ed programs that made some changes in staffing and formatting, uh, we're combining a current course that we offered with a new course that we're going to pair it with to try to have, uh, a different impact on some of our special education students. And so that's why I had to put it in, uh, tonight's agenda. I just wanted to make sure the board understood that that's why we did that. Uh, facilities advisory council, uh, no update. Carrie Matlock, our architect from DLA is present tonight. She will be touching on the life safety amendments. Um, finance advisory council, there's no update. However, Elizabeth Hennessy is scheduled to be here tonight from William Blair, who's our underwriter from our, uh, bond company, uh, and so debt service consultant. And so she'll provide some options that the board can consider in regards to life safety bonds and other bonds for the district. Personnel advisory, there's no update. Kristen will provide a board, a staffing update. I believe that's in close session. And their policy update, there was nothing, uh, from the press, uh, packet service this month.
All right. Principals report?
Uh, our first residency day is tomorrow from 12 to 8 by appointment. Um, as a reminder, all families are required to have completed the annual residency process by making an appointment online and attending one of the three sessions, um, which are on July 12th, 20th, and 24th. Students should also attend the appointment whenever possible in order to receive their school ID and schedule. Uh, summer school session one was completed on June 28th and session two will be completed on July 25th. Um, in addition to the eight students who completed the necessary requirements for graduation, uh, we also had around 100 students recover credits and 100 students take, um, enrichment opportunities such as camp college, um, which is where students can begin the college application process really by working on their, um, essay, as well as Bridge to RB is another example for incoming freshman students to become acquainted to, uh, the building and the opportunities that we have. In September, we report out, um, in more detail, the financial aspect of, uh, both summer academic opportunities as well as athletic opportunities.
All right. I can go with Scott.
Chief, uh, financial officers report?
Okay, I'd like to highlight the June 2017 financials. Once again, the very first report that you will see is our monthly review of what came in for the month of June. That was our final month of last year to close off our current fiscal year. If you flip to the next one, it will highlight our annual financials for all our funds that are out there. There were some questions submitted in regards to why is our debt service, uh, revenue less than what our expenditures were. I talked with our treasurer today and the most logical reason on that is that our interest payment that we paid in June exceeded the amount that we received from our taxes on that. We should get the money in August to catch up with that. Um, tried to look to see why would, why would the interest be a little higher? Um, what happened with that one is our bond and interest payment went up slightly, so therefore the interest went up slightly on that to potentially have where our expenditures exceed the revenue. Overall, if you take out the capital projects and the life safety projects, just a very quick glance at our financials, we did run a surplus for the year with our operating funds.
So if we're looking just at page seven of the board book, what you're talking about, it appears as if revenues were, uh, negative 514? That's the one you're referring to or what page are you referring to?
Just overall in general, if I took the operating?
Total operating funds you have as, as if we ran it?
But you have, you have the 900,000 in there, correct?
Yeah, minus.
So if you took the 900 expenditure out, you'd be at 486?
Yeah.
Surplus?
386.
386, I mean, sorry. 386.
Operating surplus.
And then the debt service out of the negative 2,643? Why is that, what's the negative 2,643, 327 on that same page?
Okay, hang on a sec.
If total other funds, district total?
So that was, that was the plan, those were the planned expenditures for our life safety, for our capital, right?
Yes.
Gotcha.
So we still have fund balances left in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
That were earmarked for those particular areas, right?
Yes.
So the fiscal year?
So like the 1.9 sitting or the, the 2.3 sitting in life safety, those were already identified as life safety issues and we already had them just a timing?
And those funds will, they'll be used for our 2017 roof project, which is earmarked in our FY 18.
So which one has the tennis courts in the parking lot?
60, capital.
Capital.
All right.
And some of it, it's, it's split. Our parking lot is X amount and then the tennis courts is life safety. So there is a portion of that whole phase three project that will be split between 460 and 90.
And is there anything still in working, in the working cash that we still have to transfer down into capital for that project?
Yes, there will be.
Roughly how much?
Roughly 425.
And so the end of this fiscal year, we were projecting a budget of about a $10,000 surplus?
And the operating funds, yes.
And we came in with roughly a $200,000 surplus. Okay.
Scott, the operating funds again or what?
That would be the educational fund, the operations and maintenance fund, the transportation fund, IMRF and social security and working cash.
So our net budget surplus was $200,000?
Yes, in the operating funds.
And we predicted a $10,000?
$10,000. Okay, um, following the monthly financials is the revenue expense report that you receive each month. Uh, just double check here. The big piece on that was the tax collection for our current year. Um, it was at 93% on there. If you look at each individual fund for, for current year, you will see it's roughly around 93%. That's what our collection was. Hopefully we will make up the, the collection, um, moving forward from our taxpayers. Bear with me one second. I know there was some more questions, um, in regards to this, but, uh, okay. Debt service, total revenue, total expense. Okay. All right, there, those were all the questions that were in regards to the monthly financials and the financial statements that were submitted. Um, moving on to the student activity account, um, last board meeting, it was asked that we look at accounts that had no activity for the entire year and figure out which of the accounts those were and close those accounts. I've highlighted on my chief financials report, some of the accounts that have been, um, either closed or had money transferred to to be closed. So I'll just highlight those quickly. English was, had a negative balance of 6,599. We moved money from the C team account to offset that negative amount and closed it. The Kyle Braid account was inactive for the entire year, so we closed that account. The band uniform account, we transferred whatever balance was in there to the band account. The Hispanic Honor Society, we transferred $163 to the Hispanic Institute Scholar account and then closed the account. Temporary residency, we shifted the money to our general registration fees account and then closed it for now. And C team, like I said earlier, we transferred those funds that were in there to English, which was the 6,599, and the remaining was sent to our general registration, um, fees account. That should take care of all of the inactive accounts in our student activity accounts. So hopefully moving forward, um, every account that's out there will be used and utilized and, um, we'll check it again for the following year. I've also included in your board book packet, the 2015, 16, and 17 tracking documents for all invoices paid through June 13th to update all the projects. And then I gave a updated paid building rental annual summary report for FY 17. Uh, the big piece on this one, uh, just to go through the report, the pie-shaped report that you have just shows what our overall revenue was and our expenses. Uh, the expenses basically are paying our security or maintenance and then we just back that out and that's what our net profit would be.
This is the first year we're tracking that, correct?
Yes, with the expenses in it. And for the new board members, the bar graph just shows which areas are being utilized within the building and the amounts that it generates.
And the one thing you don't have on there, I mean, it's nice to look like in that profit, but we don't have on there is the fact that, like the usage of the, like, like the big rental is the swim, the swimming pool, right?
Yes.
You get a lot of revenue from that. But we also have a big dehumidifier. We have mechanicals that are being used a lot.
That always need maintenance and service and it costs money to keep it all going.
Right.
It doesn't factor in, like you said, minor repairs that need to be taken into account because of the wear and tear. So even though it looks like it, you know, I would think though, hopefully that with the little bit of net profit that we have, we can cover.
Help contribute to these mechanical items that we run into.
Yes.
So Gary, I thought when we reevaluated the cost of our spaces, we were trying to incorporate usage.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, we are.
And that's, and that's why he's showing the fact that the identifiable issues, so when, when they're renting the facility and they have a security person at night where they can identify that specifically to that event, the thing we can't, that he hasn't done is to say, okay, this, the, the swimming pool is used, you know, 20% outside usage, so I'm going to take all the mechanicals associated with the swimming pool, uh, cost it all up and put 20% of that cost against the outside usage. He didn't do that side of it.
Are we going to try and move to that?
We have, we have built in the operations and maintenance, um, repair budgets, um, some money out there just in case of these additional costs. I can try to pinpoint each, um, item that breaks, but it's very hard to really.
Well, the pool, the, the dehumidifier and like the air conditioner, it runs 24/7 whether it's.
Cost to do business, right?
Right. Whether the rental groups are in there or not.
It might run a little harder when the bullets are there, but how can you track that?
Right.
Well, but I think we've been calculating in heat to have, you know, heat in the building. A portion of that is part of the rental and.
Well, right, that's why we try to build that into our fees of what they pay.
And I think the purpose of what come in from long is to show that, yeah, we, we are, there is some excess of what we charge to help cover the use of these facilities that aren't specifically identifiable to that timeframe where they're using it. And they will help contribute to our replacing mechanicals or us replacing, redoing the floor in the, in the new gym, what have you.
Right. Any other items, Scott, that there were questions on?
Um, not on the CFO report.
Okay, foils, there are none, correct, Mary Ann? There are no foils in this board packet? Police department radios is still tabled, no update there from the police chief in regards to his grant, uh, request. Um, I know that they're having a, that they have to meet their deadline soon with their new 911 communication center and all the fiber optics and all them going to the same band. So we'll see if that helps, uh, the issue that Riverside was concerned about. We have two presentations tonight, uh, and in honor of, uh, in an effort to keep them both at the front of the agenda and to be respectful of their time, um, I'm thinking if they would both come up together. Liz Hennessy from William Blair is the underwriter from, uh, from William Blair is our district's debt service underwriter and consultant, and she's going to be presenting on the life safety and then we'll turn it over to, once she's complete, we'll turn it over to Carrie Matlock, the architect from DLA, who will present on our life safety amendment. The life safety amendment is what we discussed, uh, about a month ago at our board meeting. Uh, the state of the, the school board has to approve it first before Carrie can take it to the state to get formal approval. And if she gets formal approval from the state on the amendment, then we can go through Ms. Hennessy to purchase life safety bonds to finance the projects that we need to complete in regards to life safety. So Liz, whenever you're ready.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks for having me tonight. Nice to see you again. Um, first I'm going to start with a market update and I'll, we'll apologize, this is as of June 30th, um, because we wanted to make sure you had the presentations in your board packet, um, so it doesn't include what's, uh, happened, um, this week so far. But a couple of notable things. On page one, we've got the blue line is the AAA municipal market data index for bonds with an average life of 20 years. Um, and you can see over the last five years where we priced the district series 2015 A and B bonds. That was refunding of some of the 2006, uh, B bonds. Um, we also see Brexit where we hit a low point last July 2016 when, um, Britain chose to exit the European Union, really kind of throwing the economy on its ear, uh, for the European economy and bringing interest rates down worldwide. Then we come to November of 2016, the U.S. presidential election where President Trump won and interest rates went up the fastest we've ever seen them go up in the shortest period of time. And much of that was in anticipation of his, um, policies that were expected to increase GDP, increase inflation, and increase productivity here in the U.S. Um, to the extent that really hasn't happened, as many of his policies have not come to fruition yet, um, the market kind of traded down in January. Interest rates came down a bit. Then we had a Fed rate hike in March and, uh, another Fed rate hike in June where you see the rates come up a little bit. Um, we also in June had an unemployment report that was unfavorable. Uh, just this past week, we had a more favorable, as of June 30th, a more favorable employment report. So rates kind of pop up. So as, as typical, good news is bad news for the bond market and bad news economically is good news for the bond market because it means the Fed's going to keep rates low and, uh, that, that makes the municipal market follows the Fed funds and the treasury market. So let's go to the next page and look at the yield curve. So this shows interest rates not for the, the 10 or the 20 year, but for every point on the curve from year one through year 30. So we look at these, uh, six yield curves and the green line is where we are now. And if we look at the short end of the yield curve on that green line, you can see that around year one, that short-term rate is almost up to 1%. Um, the highest we've seen over these past six years, which is a result of the Fed increasing the Fed funds rate. So that's where the impact is. But interestingly, if you go out further into years 10 and out to year 20 through 30, we're kind of the second lowest we've been in this period of time, uh, since 2010. So what that tells me is it's still a good time to borrow, good time to issue bonds. Interest rates are low compared to the last six years. So just some market commentary, I won't bother reading each of these, but this was as of June 30th. So, um, you know, even though we did have a rate increase in June, because of that kind of bad unemployment result, the Fed was, most people were betting the Fed's only going to raise rates one more time this year in December. So that's a good thing, should keep our rates pretty low and steady. Um, so you can see Fed Chair Yellen and Vice Chairman Fisher reaffirm the fourth quarter rate hike. Uh, they, Bank of England and the European Central Bank talked about, um, tightening measures with regard to raising rates. So they're starting to talk about that. And also the thing that everybody's looking at is the unwinding of the, um, U.S. purchase of treasury bonds. That, um, quantitative easing where our federal government bought a lot of bonds in the open market, um, is something that they're going to start selling some of those bonds and, and lightening up their, their, their book of debt that way. So that's also something that's expected to make fixed income, interest rates go up. But, um, so we'll see how that plays in. But then the big thing that's here in Illinois, as you, I'm sure, have been watching carefully, is what has happened with our budget. And as of June 30th, we had a Senate override of the governor's veto of the budget, but we did not yet have the House override, which of course you know did occur. So that is good. And we actually saw the state of Illinois bonds rally, meaning rates went lower on those in the secondary market. So, so that was a good thing. Um, we're still not out of the woods, as you well know. We're waiting to hear, um, what's going to happen with Senate Bill One, which was the funding mechanism for schools, uh, to receive state aid. So that's in the budget despite the fact the governor has said he's going to veto it. So, um, waiting to see on that. And, uh, as this, hopefully this plan, that this budget that has been approved gets implemented, we'll see some relief for some of our state agencies, the backlog of bills get paid down and most of all, avoid a credit rating downgrade into the junk category. That's what we're certainly hoping for. So that's good news for you, even though you have the second highest credit rating below AAA as a school district. You're a AA plus, so very strong bond rating. You do reside in the state of Illinois, so that has an impact on the interest rates you receive. But, um, you know, I think, uh, the less dependent a district is on state funding and the stronger it's able to keep its own bond rating, the better you're going to fare in the interest rate, uh, market. So that's, that's really good for you. So going into the financing.
Could we?
Yes, sir.
Could you take a step back and, and, because there's three new people on the board, so they didn't go through our refinancing before. And then secondly, we have the public out there, um, and maybe we just need to give a brief overview of life safety and what kind of burden that puts on a district once you identify a life safety issue and the reason why we're, you're even here talking to us about what we can do to not burden the taxpayers with this life safety issue.
Sure. So, and that's really a perfect segue into this page five. So the district has two types of bonds. You have life safety bonds and other bonds that do not go to the voters for referendum. And you have referendum-approved bonds, most recently are the 2006 and 2007 that were pursuant to a referendum at that time. The 2006 bonds were refunded two years ago at their call date and saved the taxpayers over the life of those bonds approximately $2 million. We now have the opportunity to refund, uh, the 2007 bonds, which were also issued pursuant to that referendum authority. And I'm going to show you some, uh, savings based on current market and there are really strong savings. The call date on those bonds is December 1 of 2017 and we can refund them within 90 days of that call date. So we're coming up quickly to that window, August and September, when we should think about refunding those because again, we're talking about some significant savings to the taxpayers. The thing, um, that we also want to talk about is life safety bonds. So if you look at page five, right in the middle of the page, you see the non-referendum current, uh, DSEB, DS is for debt service. And it's about a million dollars a year. That's a principal and interest that the district is currently paying off for existing health, life, safety bonds.
And so the board and the community understands the school district is required to do a health and life safety inspection every 10 years. And your architect and engineer, district architect of record and engineer will come through when they do a life safety inspection. That's why Carrie's here. She did that for the district in 2013. They identify items and label them as A, B, and C. Items A are urgent and you have one year to complete those repairs. Uh, B items are, are items that need to be completed within five years. And items C, items that are labeled with a C are considered borderline life safety or capital improvement, but they're, they're not required to be completed within the 10 years, correct?
They are required if you ask for money.
If you ask for money for them.
Yes, absolutely.
Correct. Most of the items that are on, are on life safety reports that the state allows life safety bonds to be issued for would be, um, replacing buildings if there's major safety infractions like we had with our old bleachers where the concrete was falling on students and, uh, the bathrooms were unusable and there was no, they're not ADA compliant. Our bleachers in the main gym, roofs.
Correct.
Asphalt, concrete, tripping hazards, fire hazards, those, electrical hazards or those type of issues. Uh, so you couldn't come in and say, hey, we want to refurbish the auditorium seats. That's not really a life safety item.
Correct.
And so if, these are items that the state deems, um, you know, mandated repairs to keep a school up to occupancy standards. Good definitions, Gary? Yeah. So we have roughly $2 million that Carrie will talk about her presentation of life safety work that still needs to be addressed, correct?
Yes.
And, no, we'll vote it in a second. So Liz is here to discuss, we probably should have did the life safety work first, but then have Liz talk about how to finance it. Is that what you prefer? Does the board prefer that? Or do we want to have Liz continue?
Continue.
Sorry, Liz.
No problem. It's all good background though. Because, um, you know, when we refunded the, the bonds in 2015 for savings, we at the same time issued those life safety bonds and the impact on the taxpayers wasn't nearly as great because it was offset by the savings on the bonds that we refunded in 2015. We have that opportunity to kind of do the same thing again where we've got savings, uh, but if you need to issue more life safety bonds, like it sounds like Carrie's going to talk about, there's ways that the, um, taxpayers will not be affected. So, um, let's go to the graph. I think the graph helps. The green bars are the life safety debt service payments and you see they just are paid off in 2021. The other thing I want to draw your attention to is the blue line. The blue line is called the debt service extension base and that's the maximum amount the district can pay off each year for non-referendum bonds like life safety bonds or working cash is another type of this bond. So you can issue those bonds as long as the payments don't go over, uh, just under $2 million a year. That line tilts slightly upward because you can apply a CPI factor to it each year, which makes it grow a bit. Um, but under the tax cap, you can't pay off more than that million eight a year. The dark blue lines represent the principal and interest paid off on bonds approved by the voters. So those do not have a limitation, but when those were issued in 2005, 2006, and 2007, you can see the final maturity on those is 2026. The payments are about the same and you're, you know, and getting near to the end of those bonds that were approved by the voters. So once those are paid off, they're done. Unless you go back to the voters for another referendum, the taxes for those bonds will fall off. Okay, so let's go to the next page.
Impact is. But interestingly, if you go out further into years 10 and out to year 20 through 30, we're kind of the second lowest we've been in this period of time since 2010. So what that tells me is it's still a good time to borrow, good time to issue bonds. Interest rates are low compared to the last six years. So just some market commentary. I won't bother reading each of these, but this was as of June 30th. So, you know, even though we did have a rate increase in June, because of that kind of bad unemployment result, the Fed was, most people were betting the Fed's only going to raise rates one more time this year in December. So that's a good thing. Should keep our rates pretty low and steady. So you can see Fed Chair Yellen and Vice Chairman Fisher reaffirm the fourth quarter rate hike. They, Bank of England and the European Central Bank talked about tightening measures with regard to raising rates. So they're starting to talk about that. And also, the thing that everybody's looking at is the unwinding of the US purchase of Treasury bonds. That quantitative easing where our federal government bought a lot of bonds in the open market is something that they're going to start selling some of those bonds and lightening up their book of debt that way. So that's also something that's expected to make fixed income interest rates go up. But, so we'll see how that plays in. But then the big thing that's here in Illinois, as you, I'm sure, have been watching carefully, is what has happened with our budget. And as of June 30th, we had a Senate override of the governor's veto of the budget, but we did not yet have the House override, which of course, you know, did occur. So that is good. And we actually saw the state of Illinois bonds rally, meaning rates went lower on those in the secondary market. So that was a good thing. We're still not out of the woods, as you well know. We're waiting to hear what's going to happen with Senate Bill 1, which was the funding mechanism for schools to receive state aid. So that's in the budget despite the fact the governor has said he's going to veto it. So waiting to see on that. And as this, hopefully, this plan, this budget that has been approved gets implemented, we'll see some relief for some of our state agencies, the backlog of bills get paid down, and most of all, avoid a credit rating downgrade into the junk category. That's what we're certainly hoping for. So that's good news for you, even though you have the second highest credit rating below AAA as a school district. You're AA plus, so very strong bond rating. You do reside in the state of Illinois, so that has an impact on the interest rates you receive. But, you know, I think the less dependent a district is on state funding and the stronger it's able to keep its own bond rating, the better you're going to fare in the interest rate market. So that's really good for you. So going into the financing.
Could you?
Yes, sir.
Could you take a step back and, because there's three new people on the board, so they didn't go through our refinancing before. And then, secondly, we have the public out there. And maybe we just need to give a brief overview of life safety and what kind of burden that puts on a district once you identify a life safety issue. And the reason why you're even here talking to us about what we can do to not burden the taxpayers with this life safety issue.
Sure. So, and that's really a perfect segue into this page five. So the district has two types of bonds. You have life safety bonds and other bonds that do not go to the voters for referendum. And you have referendum-approved bonds, most recently are the 2006 and 2007 that were pursuant to a referendum at that time. The 2006 bonds were refunded two years ago at their call date and saved the taxpayers, over the life of those bonds, approximately $2 million. We now have the opportunity to refund the 2007 bonds, which were also issued pursuant to that referendum authority. And I'm going to show you some savings based on current market, and there are really strong savings. The call date on those bonds is December 1 of 2017. And we can refund them within 90 days of that call date. So we're coming up quickly to that window, August and September, when we should think about refunding those, because again, we're talking about some significant savings to the taxpayers. The thing that we also want to talk about is life safety bonds. So if you look at page five, right in the middle of the page, you see the non-referendum current DSEB DS is for debt service. And it's about $1 million a year. That's a principal and interest that the district is currently paying off for existing health-life-safety bonds.
And so the board and the community understands the school district is required to do a health and life safety inspection every 10 years. And your architect and engineer, district architect or record and engineer will come through when they do a life safety inspection. That's why Carrie's here. She did that for the district in 2013. They identify items and label them as A, B, and C. Items A are urgent, and you have one year to complete those repairs. B items are items that need to be completed within five years. And item C, items that are labeled with a C are considered borderline life safety or capital improvement, but they're not required to be completed within the 10 years, correct?
They are required if you ask for money.
If you ask for money for them.
Yes, absolutely.
Correct. Most of the items that are on life safety reports that the state allows life safety bonds to be issued for would be replacing buildings if there's major safety infractions, like we had with our old bleachers where the concrete was falling on students and the bathrooms were unusable and there was no, they're not ADA compliant. Our bleachers in the main gym, roofs.
Correct.
Asphalt, concrete, tripping hazards, fire hazards, electrical hazards, those type of issues. So you couldn't come in and say, hey, we want to refurbish the auditorium seats. That's not really a life safety item.
Correct.
And so these are items that the state deems mandated repairs to keep a school up to occupancy standards. Good definitions, Carrie?
Yeah.
So we have roughly $2 million that Carrie will talk about her presentation of life safety work that still needs to be addressed, correct?
Yes.
No, we'll vote it in a second. So Liz is here to discuss. We probably should have did the life safety work first, but then have Liz talk about how to finance it. Is that what you prefer? Does the board prefer that? Or do we want to have Liz continue?
Continue. Okay.
Sorry, Liz.
No problem. It's all good background, though. Because, you know, when we refunded the bonds in 2015 for savings, we, at the same time, issued those life safety bonds. And the impact on the taxpayers wasn't nearly as great because it was offset by the savings on the bonds that we refunded in 2015. We have that opportunity to kind of do the same thing again, where we've got savings, but if you need to issue more life safety bonds, like it sounds like Carrie's going to talk about, there's ways that the taxpayers will not be affected. So let's go to the graph. I think the graph helps. The green bars are the life safety debt service payments. And you see, they just are paid off in 2021. The other thing I want to draw your attention to is the blue line. The blue line is called the debt service extension base. And that's the maximum amount the district can pay off each year for non-referendum bonds like life safety bonds. Or working cash is another type of this bond. So you can issue those bonds as long as the payments don't go over just under $2 million a year. That line tilts slightly upward because you can apply a CPI factor to it each year, which makes it grow a bit. But under the tax cap, you can't pay off more than that $1,008,000 a year. The dark blue lines represent the principal and interest paid off on bonds approved by the voters. So those do not have a limitation. But when those were issued in 2005, 2006, and 2007, you can see the final maturity on those is 2026. The payments are about the same and you're, you know, and getting near to the end of those bonds that were approved by the voters. So once those are paid off, they're done. Unless you go back to the voters for another referendum, the taxes for those bonds will fall off. Okay, so let's go to the next page. As I mentioned, we've got the opportunity to refund the 2007 B bonds. And so let me just review the options I'm going to show you. Option 1 is going to be the refunding bonds only, no life safety or no working cash bonds, and this impact on the taxpayers just from the refunding. Then we're going to look at the refunding issue plus $2 million of life safety bonds issued at the same time. The idea of issuing them at the same time is that you have lower cost of issuance. So you're just doing one issue for two purposes, and that helps saves a little bit on the cost. And what you'll see when we issue $2 million of bonds for life safety, there's really no tax increase, and in fact, there'll be a bit of a decrease. Option 3A is issue the refunding bonds plus $2 million life safety bonds and $3 million of working cash fund bonds. Doesn't have to be working cash fund bonds, but working cash fund bonds can be issued to do other capital projects, also paid within that DSEB, that debt service extension base under the tax cap, but can be very useful to get capital projects done that may not qualify for health-life safety. And then option 3B is the same thing, but they're paid off a little quicker. So I'll get into the nuances in those two options in a minute. So let's go to page 8. Starting on the left-hand side of the page, there's that debt service extension base, that 1.8 million of non-referendum bonds that you can pay off each year. We know CPI for 2017 is going to be 2.1%, and we've assumed in the future 1.5%. So that's, we're trying to be conservative. We know the Fed wants CPI at 2%. And we can change that assumption as we go forward. Then we've got the current life safety debt service, the $1 million a year that's paid off in 2021. And that is taken away from that debt service extension base, leaving remaining debt service capacity each year of about $750,000. And then it grows. Once those bonds are paid off, the life safety bonds, it jumps up to $1,009,000. And you can go out a maximum of 20 years. One thing we've talked about in the past that we think is a good practice is to keep the bonds issued under the debt service extension base relatively short. Why? You have a lower interest cost. And you want to make sure that if you need to go back to that debt service extension base again for some emergency life safety or something, that you have the flexibility to do so. So that's the remaining capacity. That's the space under that blue line we just saw.
Mary, can you scroll that slide up a little bit so the community can see the bottom box? That's important.
It is. So next, we've got the remaining referendum debt service. And the savings from refunding the 2007 portion of this is just under $3 million of savings over the life of these bonds, 10 years, to the taxpayers. So that is extremely strong savings. And it shows that our rates are still low, and it's a wonderful opportunity. The money can only go back to the taxpayers through the debt service levy. There's no way that savings can be redirected in any way to district operating funds. So that is 12, 2.6 million in terms of present value savings. And we look at this ratio, the present value savings as a percentage of refunded bonds, it's 12%. So that's a really strong ratio. We want that to be north of 5, and it's double that.
I'm sorry. I lost you the last 20 seconds.
Okay, so.
Where's the present value on here?
If you go under the column that says savings from proposed refunding bonds, the 2.9 million.
Okay.
If we take.
So maybe, maybe for, again, the current, those referendum bonds, what kind of interest rate do they currently have?
Around 4.75%.
And you use an assumption of what, 2.5%?
Yes. That's what we're looking at.
Right, or, so that's the reason we're getting savings is the differential in the interest rates if we were to refinance it right now?
Exactly right.
Two percentage point differential in savings. Okay.
Correct.
Down 43, that's 40, what is it, 43 million of debt, or which side do we look at? 46 or the 40?
You look at, the 46 is what you had before, minus the 2.9 million leaves you with about 43, now.
44 million of debt, okay. So that's where the saving is coming from.
That's the savings, exactly.
The interest rate differential.
So as you see, we're just taking the savings in equal amounts each year. We're not shortening up the bonds and we're not stretching them out any longer. Just keeping the repayment schedule exactly the same.
And if we didn't have life safety issues where we needed to fund it, but we do have life safety issues, you would recommend going and redoing this for automatic savings soon as they're callable?
Yep. And I recommend that in any case.
Any case, right. With this kind of differential. If the differential in interest rates were smaller, but let's not, all right. And they're callable December 1st?
Within three months of the call date.
December 1st, but you can do it three months before. So, and because we're looking at a Fed rate hike sometime in December, that's why we would recommend getting into the market in September, October.
All right. So the 6 million, all the way to the left, non-referendum total, that's the other life safety debt that's out there?
Yes.
So that's why our total debt service is roughly 49, 929.
Correct.
Okay.
So your present value savings as a percentage of refunded bonds, you said 5% is typically a cutoff that you.
3% to 5%.
3% to 5%?
Correct.
So we're at 12%?
So it's really strong.
Really strong.
Really strong.
Okay, so, I mean, although option 1 explains all that to the taxpayer, it's not necessarily realistic for the district's needs, because we know we have life safety needs.
So what, and you're showing here on a.
$300,000 home.
How much tax savings can they have?
Over the life of the bonds, it's about $359,000. And it's about $36,000 a year. So that's on a $300,000 market value.
Over 10 years, it would save a $300,000 home $360,000.
Yes. The other thing I want to point out here, and it's in that second bullet, is that in 2026, the debt service that was approved by referendum goes to zero. So that's going to be a 55-cent tax rate decrease, and that equates to a $500,000 savings on that same $300,000 home. So the end is near. And page 9 is a graphic of option 1, the savings alone. And the gray bars on the top represent the amount of savings that you recognize in those levy years. So this is just the savings alone. So the next two options, we're going to keep that refunding the same. And we're going to look at adding life safety in option 2. So let's go to page 10. So if we start on the left side of the page.
Keep going, Mary.
Yeah, thanks.
A little more, just so they can see the bottom.
There you go.
Right there.
All right, so the $2 million proposed life safety bonds are shown on the left side of the page, and we're paying those off over seven years. That's the same period of time we paid off the prior bonds. It's $2 million, and the debt service, the new debt service is about $315,000 a year. And so what happens is that increase is offset by the savings from the refunding, which is just under $300,000 a year. So that if we look at the net tax increase or decrease to the taxpayer, it's zero in terms of rate. It's a dollar or two, you know, for the taxpayer. So really negligible. But after the life safety bonds are paid off in 2024, then you're back to your $36,000 a year. So this option, net-net, refunding plus the new life safety, saves the taxpayer only $93,000 over those same years. Again, because the savings on the refunding is soaked up a bit by the new life safety bond issue for $2 million.
But it's still a savings.
Right.
Correct? So for the first seven years, if we issue the $2 million, the taxpayer will see a $2 increase, the first year a $2 increase, second year $1.88, $2.
Yeah, it's, they're not, it's going to be minuscule, yeah.
And then in the last three years, they start seeing the 36.
Correct.
And that decrease of the 55 cent decrease still starts after 2026.
Yes, that's the same on all of these options.
So to be fair to the taxpayer, right, if we didn't go with the life safety bonds, and with these two differentials, it's actually a $37 or $38 differential year 1, a $39 differential year 2, blah, 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 because they would have saved $35,000 or $36,000. Now we're telling, we need life safety bonds, so you're not going to get that savings, plus you get another $2.
Right.
Right. But you will still get them just a few years.
I mean, overall, we're saying 3 is almost $400 savings. You're saving 100, so the differential's 300 over the life of the whole 10 years.
Yeah. So page 11 looks at a graphic of that. So here, if you look at the bottom, those light blue bars, that's the debt service from that new $2 million life safety. The gray bars again represent the savings on the top. So you can see, net-net, there's really, if you go to the top of the blue bars, very little change in what people would see on their tax bill. Okay, let's go to option 3. So option 3 is the $2 million life safety and $3 million working cash. This is a longer payback. It's a longer payback because the attempt is to try to keep this tax-neutral to the taxpayer. Okay, so you can see in the middle of the page, we've got $3 million working cash and $2 million life safety. And just to review, working cash is very flexible. It goes into the working cash fund and then can be transferred to the O&amp;M fund and the capital projects fund to complete capital projects that may or may not qualify for life safety. So.
So an example, where I had Liz pull this up, is the board has discussed briefly, and we were going through the building of the tennis courts in Rockefeller, and even during the settlement agreement and the discussions with the Village of Brookfield, at some point, the board was going to try to look into negotiating a long-term deal with Cook County in order to get the fields back just north of the school so that we can have, be a public high school that has access to a girls' softball field, a boys' baseball field, an auxiliary soccer field, a field for PE, and so that we're not spread throughout the community at different parks and different locations. So the reason I had Liz put this on here, by no means is the administration ready to make a recommendation on this tonight, but I wanted to make sure the board understood all their options. And even as I'm sitting, listening to Liz, I'm writing a few notes because I want to ask a couple of questions at the end. But with our bond rating being so high and interest rates being so low, the board should make sure they consider the opportunity of, is it smarter to do life safety bonds? Is it smarter to do a combination of life safety and working cash bonds so that we have this money available at a time when the county is struggling and coming up with soda taxes and different things to raise revenues? We might be able to say to them, we're willing to do a long-term license for the fields and eliminate them parking cars on the fields and allow us to run high school programs on our campus, or right next door to our campus, instead of having to drive and bus kids to tennis courts and baseball fields and soccer fields in Brookfield, North Riverside, Big Ballpark, Indian Gardens. We're kind of all over the place. And that was one of our issues of trying to build some parking and tennis. And so it's something we would need to consider. There are some parameters if we were to do these working cash bonds to address capital projects. We would have to spend that money within.
You have to expect to spend it within three years.
Within three years. And so it's something that the board should consider. And so the reason I asked Liz is to just try to figure out, the goal here is to, little or no impact on the taxpayers. And so if we just do the $2 million life safety, we'll address our needs. If an opportunity came up with the zoo or with the county, we would then have to just tap into our reserves, which at this point, you know, we're over the recommended 33% fund balance, but we're not exactly flush with cash with possible pension shifts and cost, property tax freezes still being out there and things like that. And a budget that we're discussing tonight that's starting to show a deficit. So I don't know if that's the best option. And so the reason I had Liz put this out there was, as she said, we're looking at a 12% savings between our, with our debt service, and it may be the right time to look at 2 or 3 million in working cash. And the question I had written down, Liz, is it an option for the board? Is the interest rate much different if instead of doing the life safety, what if we did 3 million or 4 million in just working cash and used it to address all the life safety issues plus any other cap? I mean, is.
No difference.
No.
The bonds, whether they're life safety or working cash, are issued with the security of the debt service extension base. And as long as the payments are within that, they're considered a general obligation bond. So the security is the same whether it's life safety or working cash. You have different processes for approval, however. The process for approving life safety, and Carrie will talk more about this, is to prepare the life safety amendments, have the Cook Regional Office and the Illinois State Board of Education approve those amendments before you can be authorized to issue the bonds. With working cash bonds, you have instead a limit, which you have lots of flexibility with regard to your working cash limit. But you also have a procedure called a petition period and a public hearing required. The petition period involves the board approving a resolution of intent to issue working cash bonds. The notice of that intent is published in the newspaper. That begins a 30-day petition period. And if within 30 days, 10% of the registered voters would submit a petition, that would cause the issue to go to a referendum. Life safety bonds, on the other hand, simply require the approval of the amendments and a public hearing. But the proceeds are restricted only for life safety-approved projects.
Correct.
They cannot be used for the parking, the zoo issue.
Right. So it's not a parking issue, so I'll make sure it's clear. What the board has discussed briefly, and it started with the previous board and the current board has expressed interest in exploring, is trying to get the district's students on or near its campus and stop spreading them throughout the community. Not that we have an issue. We have great internal governmental agreements. We're doing things with our different park districts. But, you know, for a student to not have played a home softball game once on their campus and have it be in a park district, or junior varsity soccer or freshman soccer, I mean, some of those things could be addressed if we could figure out a way to. The talks that broke down, which I know this was explained at the village board meeting, there were talks at the school district front, money to the county to expand their gravel parking lot behind the fields in exchange so that they would stop parking on the fields and the school district could use those fields for extracurricular activities and for physical education classes and school activities. Those talks have not restarted, but, you know, do we do this? Do we pursue those talks while we have an opportunity to borrow money at a really low rate? You know, and not tap into the district's reserves? So that was the reason I had Liz do this.
The question comes is that with the lack of success we've had for the past six years trying to work with the zoo on negotiating some kind of land deal, what happens if three years from now, we're still in a hold situation with the zoo? What happens with that $3 million?
Well.
Do we have to pay back the bonds?
No.
You can only pay $1,008,000.
Right.
Sorry?
Can only pay $1,008,000, right?
You can pay, you have, you're paying them back $1,008,000 a year, no more than that.
Right.
But if you don't spend the money on what you intended to, because things change, you were unsuccessful in your negotiation, whatever the case may be, if you have other capital projects, you really have, you know, complete flexibility with regard to what you use that money for.
Working cash bonds can be used for any purpose, right?
Working cash bonds can be used for any purpose, right?
That's right.
No, 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 but not these, right? We can't go and switch them over to the education fund.
No, you have to declare that in your resolution, correct?
Correct. So there's two types of working cash bonds. Capital, which we're talking about here, for capital projects, those may be issued on a tax-exempt basis, and that's what we've shown you options for here. If, on the other hand, let's say we get the tax freeze and the pension shift and your operating funds are pressured and you want to issue working cash bonds simply to help your cash flow, you could do that as well, but that's a different type of bond. It's a taxable working cash bond. And the interest rate is a bit higher on taxable working cash bonds, but that gives you complete flexibility to use it for either operating needs, cash flow, educational purposes, or capital.
So back to the original question, if we don't, if we don't get a deal with the zoo, we don't get the parking lot we want.
You mean the land?
Fields, no parking.
What happens, what happens to the three million?
And we get the field.
If your intent, and we have to start out with intent.
Right, right.
Intent A is fields. Intent B is other capital projects, maybe including additional life safety.
All the money that district has been spending on capital for the past ten years, I think we have a lot of.
You'd have a lot of.
A lot of people mad at us, saying we're going to create a new capital project for the three million. So what happens if we don't have any more capital projects and we have the three million sitting there and we don't spend it? What happens?
Well, you can say, I expect to spend it on capital over the next five years. If you really don't have any capital to spend it on in the next five years, then we should go into it issuing it on a taxable basis in case that happens. That would be the safest thing to do.
Is there a portion that you can refund back to the taxpayers?
You can always refund it back to the taxpayers who are abating it. So let's say you've got that three million, you weren't able to get the deal with the zoo, and now you have nothing else you need it for, you want to give it back to the taxpayers. You abate the debt service tax levy, so instead of the taxpayers paying that up to 1.8 million a year.
We would pay it.
You pay it with the bond proceeds.
All right, so we can abate.
You can abate.
But you still have the bonds outstanding.
Yeah, and then.
You can't call them.
That's right.
We didn't spend the three million.
Yeah.
So now we will make the debt service payment as opposed to the property tax receipt coming in to pay it.
So Tim brings up another option, which if three A, option three A, looks at bonds that go out fourteen years for working cash. So they would, municipal bonds, unlike your home mortgage, are not callable at any time. But they are callable usually ten years and after, which is why here we are in 2017, we have the opportunity to refund the 2007 bonds. We're at that ten-year mark. So if we went with option A, where you've got the longer payback on the working cash bonds, you'd have a call date around year nine or 10. So the other option is to take that three million and use it to pay off the bonds at the call date. We'd set up an escrow at a bank to pay off the bonds before the call date and then after. So then we would be paying off principal and foregoing the interest cost altogether. So that's another way you could use that three million if you did not, if you were not able to get the deal you want with the zoo and had no other projects or needs.
So we're either abated or do what you just said.
Yes, either abate or redeem the bonds at the call date.
Liz, so the, we're in a good situation. From a superintendent to his board, the fact that we have a high bond rating and interest rates are low, it's almost like refinancing your house a little bit and having a little extra cash to re, so this is a good thing. We're not sitting here where we're having trouble making payroll and our issuing tax anticipation warrants, you know, and then we're looking to do these bonds to just do. Let me ask a couple more questions so that, I still, what is the, right now, how much more debt capacity do we have? I mean, the first chart puts it in a few, less than a million dollars, going up to two, and we're talking about issuing, if you already did it before I got here.
There's a column.
What page is it?
So, you know, let's look, let's look at page thirteen. And we can look at this graph, because I think it helps graphically to see.
Is there a chart first? Like, the, page one says the remaining debt capacity.
And that's without referendums. So, yeah, let's, if you want to go back to page one.
Is there a chart that shows what our remaining debt capacity is?
Yes, pages eight and nine. So page eight is the chart, page nine is the graph.
So.
So what we've got on the left-hand side of the page is your starting, next to the tax years, your debt service extension base. That is the amount of bonds you can pay off a year, principal and interest, without going to the voters for referendum. You've got about a million payments on the current life safety bonds that end in 2021. So the column, remaining DSEB capacity, looks at, starting at 750,000 and then going up to a million nine after the life safety bonds are paid off. That's your debt service capacity. You can leverage that for up to twenty years if you wanted to. We don't recommend that because that takes your flexibility away.
Convert the three million number he did to your chart. That's what I'm not, every time you do this. Kevin threw out a number of, if we issued three million in life safety and how much, I mean, three million in working cash and how much in life safety?
Two million.
So how do, how does your chart show me I can issue five million in debt?
Page twelve.
So let's go back to page twelve.
Because she's doing it in a different timeframe.
She's spread it over fourteen years instead of seventeen. We stay on there at one point.
And if you go to the seven-year, page fourteen, then you basically lose all your capacity.
We have to spread it out to fourteen years so that way our payments would stay on there at 1.7. Ken, that's showing, is this showing me what my payment capacity is or what my?
Payment, payment.
Again, I think it's, where does it show I can issue five million dollars in bonds?
Well, if we look under the column that says three million non-referendum working cash bonds, that's three million, you're going to pay back 680,000 of interest.
So your chart doesn't actually show what our debt, our issuing capacity is, it shows what our payment capacity is, and you converted then to how much debt we can issue.
But your debt capacity, based on the length of the debt, can be greater or smaller, right?
Right, right. So if you look at that column, that three million.
So I could be, I could be basically at the five million if I'm paying it off in only five years, but I'm at seven, I'm at 7.6 if I pay it off over seven years, based off of your page fourteen chart. Right? Because you're hidden max capacity, right? But then we, two years left, we got another million and another million six we can use of that capacity. And then if we go to, what's the max you can do under?
Twenty years.
So then we got another thirteen year, or another twelve years of a million, almost two million a year that we can borrow up to if we have an amortization schedule that went full twenty years.
All right, you just probably lost everybody, including me.
I'll say in English. So the limitation on what you can spend is based on, the limitation is what you can spend on a debt capacity, which is based on the interest rates and the length of time you issue a debt.
Exactly.
So the lower the interest rates and the longer you issue the debt, the more debt you can issue.
The more principal you get out of it for projects.
Correct.
Yes.
That's why her first option A is over fourteen years.
Well.
And then to clarify your point, life safety is very rigid. Carrie puts it in, the state approves it, there's a limitation, and actually, there's a limitation that that dollar amount issue in debt, but we have to redo the life safety work once we submit it, if they approve it.
Correct.
Carrie?
Correct.
If you submit a life safety amendment and the state approves it, we have to do the life safety work.
If we borrow the money.
If we borrow the money.
When we, when we sat them down, we meant to, made it clear to the district, the people and people, that life safety, that is come, they come through every ten years.
Right.
They identify all the problems with the building. We identified, how much was the total? We didn't give them the total at the time, but it was.
Ten million.
Ten million or twelve million.
Right.
We're now down to the last three million. We've already cleaned, and, but once they identify, they have to be done in a certain timeframe based on A, B, or C.
We covered all that for the viewers.
Yeah, but I'm trying to connect it to the debt issuance now, okay? And I understand it. So once they approve the life safety, we have to do it, whether we borrow money or use it out of our working fund, we have to do the work based on the ABC schedule. So if we approve the, if the debt, if the state approved the life safety for three million, somehow we have to fund it.
Let's back up a little bit.
Let me finish my question first, okay? Did I say something that's wrong so far?
Yes, you did.
What did I say that was wrong? She keeps shaking her head and saying yes to me.
Let's have everybody take a deep breath. If you submit an amendment and we want a bond for the amendment, we have to do the work. We don't have to submit this amendment tonight if the board says, hey, let's issue four million in working cash and that's how we'll pay off the life safety repairs. If the board says tonight.
So that's where you were wrong.
If the board says tonight, hey, instead of going life safety and working cash, why not just take out four million in working cash? We can choose to say, we'll take a million of that four million and negotiate a deal with the zoo. We'll take another million and address these life safety items, and then we'll have the two million to address the items that are on this life safety report over the next, remaining ten years of that life safety report till 2023.
Is that correct?
It is.
Or if we know there's a life safety, do we have to submit it to the state?
We already have submitted your life safety issues to the state. The state has recognized them and they've acknowledged that you've done your due diligence for the ten-year requirement.
Okay.
The question here on the table is, are you going to fund them with life safety bonds? That's what the amendments are for.
All right, well, let me go to, he led into what my second question was going to be. So, but if we do get it approved and we decide to issue, if we submit it, it's approved and we issue life safety bonds, as long as we have the debt capacity, we can do it. We can issue the bonds. But on working cash bonds, aside from the other things you talked about, isn't there a limitation on how much we can issue in working cash bonds? Besides our debt capacity?
There is a separate working cash limit, yes. Talked about that at the beginning. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring that slide, but I'll get it back. I know I've given it to you, Kevin, before, and it's, it's a larger number, so.
It's, do you have a rough, I remember what?
You know what? If you.
Might be able to look through your email.
I'll get it, I'll get it for you before the end of tonight.
So besides going through a couple other steps to issue working cash bonds, there's a more of a limitation to just our debt capacity to issue?
It's a separate statutory limit, and it's based on eighty-five percent, yeah, the ed funding statute.
Now, whenever you say working cash, don't, don't you have to specify if it's taxable or non-taxable?
Yes.
Because I don't want to get those mixed up.
Right. And she touched on it. If it's for capital, it's non-taxable.
It's absolutely right.
But you can use taxable for capital, but you can't use non-taxable for other kind of capital, is what you said.
You can't use tax exempt for operational.
Correct.
Right.
So there's, the reason that life safety, they have you submit that amendment, it's like a second checks and balance.
Right.
So that if this, if you're going to go out and do this life safety and purchase these bonds without voter approval, it's like the state's people saying, yes, that work is absolutely needed. It's a second level of checks and balance. If we were going to use the working, working cash money to use it. And there's, there's some items that Carrie will discuss tonight on her amendments that the state may say, you know, we don't feel that's a life safety amendment, or we don't feel that debt. But if our pool dehumidifier breaks within the next five years, how do we pay for it? You know? So that's where the flexibility of using the working cash capital could come, could come in.
You said the tax-exempt bonds can go to operations or not?
Not. They cannot go.
Pure capital.
Pure capital, correct.
Now, you said they can go to operations and maintenance.
Well, if you have capital items in your operation and maintenance budget, you can use working ca, tax exempt working cash for that, but you can't pay for the operational part of your O and M fund expenditures. So like.
If we were doing a repair to a piece.
Because to.
That's not capital.
So a question, what?
We could replace the equipment.
If life safety, right, is for life safety, working cash is, you can use that for life safety and capital, but you can't use the life safety for capital. What's the advantage of getting life safety by which you always get the working capital?
Advantage of life safe, the advantage of doing life safety is there's no thirty-day petition period. So even though to all of us, to board members and people who have an interest in the school district or maybe have kids coming up into the school district or know the issues we deal with of not having any fields, someone out there, if the, if ten percent of the voters were to dispute those working cash bonds, it then has to become a referendum question. With life safety, as long as the state approves the amendment and says this is qualified life safety work, we're able to issue those bonds without any kind of objection.
That was my question.
I spent a lot of time with these two. It's come a long time.
You're doing, you're doing a good job. Just to get back to the difference between option three A and three D, option three A is designed to keep the tax impact very minimal on the taxpayer. Tim, before you got here, we're talking about the refunding, how strong the refunding savings is for this fall. We're looking at almost three million of savings over ten years to the taxpayers. So as we look at adding in the life safety and maybe a working cash, we want to, in option three A, keep the impact pretty neutral to the taxpayer. And that is what you get if you look on the far right column. It may be a penny increase in, out five years or so, but the dollar amount over those ten years is only sixty-three dollars, only eight dollars or so in many of those years. But we're paying off the life safety and working cash, you know, over fourteen years. And in our conversations in the past, we've kind of wanted to keep it around seven years. But the other thing to note is that still when those referendum bonds are paid off in 2026, that tax rate drops, in this case, because you'll still have some life safety working cash bonds out, fifty cents instead of fifty-five cents. The savings on that $300,000 home in that case is about $454. Because we're talking about the referendum bonds are, when they're gone, they're gone. They can't be reissued unless the district determines to go to the voters for another bond. Page thirteen is just a graphic of that, and you can see the orange bars are the working cash and the light blue bars are the life safety and how they kind of go out there to fourteen years to the year 2030 tax years. The gray bars again are the savings from the refunding. Contrast three A with three B, the final option, this pays off the working cash and life safety, you know, within that seven-year period through 2023. And so the advantage of that is the interest cost is lower. If you compare the two spreadsheets, you've got about 900,000 to a million dollars less in interest for the two issues. The interest rates, instead of two eight on the working cash, is 2.16. Instead of 3.34 on the life safety, it's 2.22. So you have lower interest cost, but because we've got, you know, five million paid off in seven years, it is not completely offset by the savings, the 295,000 a year from the refunding. So you have a small net increase of about seven or eight cents for the first six years, then it goes to zero, and then you have savings in the last three years. So all told, over those ten years, it's a net $300 increase to the home. So just wanted to show you those different payback schedules. The advantage of A is that it's pretty much tax neutral to the taxpayer, but you have a higher interest cost because it's a fourteen-year payback versus option three B has the shorter payback, seven years, but you've got a small increase to the taxpayer in those first six years.
Let me ask two questions on it. If I compare page twelve to fourteen, three A to three B, in the right column, you say the impact on the home at the total, three A, sixty-three dollars, and three B, it's 303. So in theory, if I just compare those two numbers, it's actually going to cost the taxpayer 240 more dollars for the shorter period of time. I just look at that, but you also don't have, show what the effect is in the last four years on there.
What I don't show, yes, is after the big drop, when the referendum bonds are paid off, I don't show that there is going to be additional, you know, they're going to still continue to pay about 700 and, or 800,000 a year on the remaining life safety bonds.
Right.
So we're just looking at that ten-year period for comparison. That's a good point.
That's a good point. That's why I wanted her to put it on the bottom, at least so someone can see after 2026, they're going to get some savings, regardless of what we do.
Yeah. Back on page fourteen, the drop in the, is 55 cents when those bonds are paid off, only 50 cents in option three A, because of course, we have to continue the payments for four years on the life safety and working cash. So, you know, these options are put out there for you guys to just think about, you know, what options you might have, considering what. what options you might have, considering what projects you, you know, prioritize and want to take advantage of. I will reiterate what Dr. Skinkis has said. You know, we've got low interest rates and you've got a super-strong bond rating, which you'd be congratulated on in your conservative financial management to keep that double-A plus.
Liz, is there a reason why we chose 3? It's the one, I mean...
Three million?
Yeah. Is that just a number you came up with, just a... I mean, if we did 2 million?
We could do 2 million.
Or if we did 2 million, 4 million total, just working cash? Because we know we have 2 million roughly in life safety.
Is that what the number is, Carrie? 2 million?
Well, those are options for you tonight. We can just talk about those.
Yeah, it's part of the discussion tonight. But we're roughly around 2 million. And then we got... That would give us 2 million of flexibility to possibly do a long-term agreement with the zoo and then have, you know, roughly a million dollars of that two... Of that remaining to then fix the field. You know, we've got to remember that if we were able to get the fields, we've got to figure out how we're going to fix all the ruts in the gravel they put down for our walkway and redoing fencing and diamonds and so make sure that kids are safe to play on and safe for kids to have class on. So we have to save some of that for that, but...
Yeah. So if you do the 2 million and 2 million, 4 million altogether of those two options, so the 3A option...
But if we did anything greater than the 3 and the 2, we really couldn't do anything greater under the seven-year timeframe because you hit the max capacity, did you not? You're showing us hitting max, right? Because I'm looking there and I'm seeing the remaining, it's like...
On the short payback.
Yeah, seven years. So we went on a short payback. We're...
We're hitting the max, right? We're using up the debt base. So you can't pay off any more.
I mean, is it better off to do the... I mean, I'm just thinking out loud. Again, 3 and 2, so that if we don't need that extra million, we rebate it and back to taxpayers, then you have that option.
Right, but I think, yeah, I think one of the discussions we have to have is, is do we want to have the taxpayers have an opportunity to come and discuss? Because, you know, if we did it all life safety, then they're not going to have an opportunity... We're kept kind of with the life safety. But if we're going to go with the working cash, it gives the taxpayers an opportunity to come in front of us and see what their beliefs are one way or the other, to come and talk and discuss.
It's true, it allows for that, though. You'd have to have the hearing.
Right, we're working, yeah, right.
You have to have the hearing, it's part of the...
Right, right, right. But if you put it all into working cash and we get a negative...
Well, you couldn't put it all in. All you could put is 2 million. That's the max you could put in working. Or in... I'm sorry.
Right.
He's saying all words.
Right, you guys were discussing putting it all in working cash. And if we get a negative outcry, then we're going to have to go back and say, well, we need life safety.
Well, we can approve the amendment tonight. Carrie can submit the amendment. If the state approves the amendment, it's on record that it's been approved by the state. If we chose in the 30-day petition period and not to issue the life safety bonds, we're not obliged to have to do it, are we?
We are. You are.
Once you submit the amendment and the state approves it, you have to use... You have to go get life safety bonds?
That's what you're asking for. I'd have to amend it. I'd have to resubmit and say, no, we're not going to do this.
We're going to use alternative sources of funding.
Correct.
Is that as long of a wait period?
I, you know, that would depend upon their schedule. I couldn't speak to that.
Well, I got to say, Gary, we have to have our discussion on the life safety, but if we think as a board, we should submit, you know, we should do this life safety work, I think we're doing the right thing by issuing life safety bonds because we're... And actually, I'm concerned if we don't submit it, that we're kind of... Are we taking a risk now that we think there's life safety because of... There's different alternative fundings, we're not going to submit it to the state. You know, we talked about that with the stands out here, that every year we failed the review from the state on the condition of our stands, and we did it for years. So there's a reason that the law allows you to issue the life safety bonds without having the constituents raise, because in theory, it needs to be done. And if you have the capacity to do it, which we do, because we're in a pretty strong financial condition, that's why the law allows it. So I... I'm beyond the fence on the other thing, whether if we decide to do working cash, whether we should do tax-exempt or taxable, because that's what you do. But if we think we need to do the life safety, I would strongly push for doing life safety bonds.
A lot of districts don't do that, don't do life safety bonds because they don't want to deal with this process.
Okay.
That is really it.
They don't want to deal with the state coming back and saying...
Right.
Because when the state looks at a project, they look at a project throughout the state.
Right.
So school down south...
Costs $X amount.
It's not paying, but we're paying a square concrete.
Right.
You know?
There's a lot of back and forth. I mean, they communicate with us on a regular basis, asking questions. So once I submit this, there'll be back and forth. There was quite a bit last time we submitted.
Right.
And this... You're absolutely right. This is the process you've been utilizing.
Are there any questions for Liz? I'm going to ask Liz to stay while Carrie does her presentation, just so if other questions need to be bounced back to Liz.
And then after Carrie, we can move to the schedule.
Okay. Are we good with Liz for the time being?
This sounds good.
Yeah. Good. Thank you, Liz. It was very helpful.
All right, Carrie.
I'm going to be a little shorter.
Okay.
So...
What page is that on, Mary Ann, in the...
There are a lot of pages.
Page 90 in Board Book?
I don't think you really need to follow along. I think you can listen to me and we'll talk about it, and you don't necessarily need to. The total we're showing right here is 6.18... $760 million, right? So that's a lot different than what the numbers we've been talking about. And the reason that is, is because we've added a few things to consider tonight. Doesn't necessarily mean that you need to move forward with this. The state allows for energy conservation items and security issues and things like that. So the facility committee asked that we take advantage and take a look and have some discussion about a few line items. So the bulk of this is just leftover life safety items from your 10-year survey, the ones that haven't been completed over the course of the last several years, right? So that's... That is a... There's a list of about 60 line items here. And the majority of those line items are fire issues, you know, ceiling penetrations above ceilings, door replacement, operating doors, making sure that they're working, installing handrails, pavers uneven, those types of things, bleacher replacement, things that you've done in the past. So all of that, those are all of those line items. The things that we've added this time around for your consideration, for discussion tonight, and this is just a draft, it hasn't been submitted anywhere, even to your district yet, this is just for discussion purposes, we were asked to include the lighting at the pool because there has been some, you know, corrosion on the fixtures that has caused some, you know, fixtures to dislodge. And... But that's all been tied back, but we thought we could include that as an energy conservation measure, as well as a safety measure, because they are metal halide and they could... We could switch those to LED, which is something that you don't have to maintain quite as often, right? Less replacement of bulbs and so forth. So that line item is on here. Then there is also a line item for the mechanical unit that is up on the pool area, right? Because that unit is working very hard and the lifetime expectancy of that is probably a lot lower than it should be based upon all of the work that you've had to do over the course of several years on it. So we've included that, replacement of that unit on there for your consideration as well. Then the LED, replacement of the T8 fixtures, which are these types of fixtures throughout the building, and switching it to LED lighting, again, an energy conservation measure. Those are all options for you to discuss. But as Dr. Skinkis has already stated, the pretty much, even if you just omitted the LED fixtures for the rest of the building, classrooms and so forth, that would leave you with roughly about $2 million. Oh, also on this list is some remediation for flooding in the basement. There's some seepage, and we're going to put some backflow preventers on it, but that was on your original life safety. What we did do was back down that dollar amount a little bit because we've already corrected some of those issues with the work that we've done across the street, believe it or not. So it's helped a great deal with what we've had on your existing building, even though we didn't really touch anything over here related to that, so...
Can you expand on how that has helped?
Sure. Gosh, I mean, we've created a very large storage unit, the low grade, for stormwater with restrictors and a ton of other precautions, pumps and so forth, that has taken that off of the streets in conjunction with work that has been done in the streets from the local jurisdiction. And together, those have really alleviated some of the issues that you've had in your building, which I can only imagine has alleviated some of the flooding that's happened in the neighborhood.
So in other words, flooding from over there actually seeped over here and actually caused this building?
Right, right. I mean, it was coming... It was backing up, actually, into the building for the most part, and...
Well, that's wonderful. We get something for that extra space.
If the district... Oh, excuse me, if the board will look at page 101 in Board Book, it's a... Looks like an Excel spreadsheet. Item number six is to replace the existing pool lights with LED fixtures. That's roughly 180. And then if the board scrolls to page 104, these are the two big items, which is 550 for rooftop unit, and then 3.5 million, which is an outrageous number, for the just replacing every light fixture that we haven't already replaced to an LED. Now Carrie was also going to check on to see if there's some Department of Energy refunding that will help this off.
And there is some grant money associated with that, so the district can take advantage of.
And the other...
Can we get an estimate of what kind of savings?
That's something that the district needs to engage in.
Somebody else.
Right.
We hired a consultant last time when we did the gyms and we did the field house and we did all that.
But is there kind of a... Isn't there kind of a mathematical thing that says if you've got X number of square footage and you've got X number of spacing on it, switch them to LEDs, you get an X amount of energy?
No, this money, you know, is kind of ebbs and flows, and it's run out before, and so there's no guarantee.
No, I'm not asking about the money, but I'm asking about the savings.
Oh! Like, is it a dollar a light or anything like that?
You know, I mean, if they're based on the...
There's a mathematical equation certainly for that, and it depends on the age of your fixtures. So, you know, your fixtures here in some of the areas are not as old as others. If it was, if we were moving from a, you know, a 20 or 30-year-old fixture to an LED, there'd be a much greater savings.
Right.
Such as in the pool area, such as in the pool area. I think those fixtures are, in some areas, are a little bit older. But if you were, you know, these are a longer payback period, so...
We were also checking on the just... You were going to look at the bulbs.
Exactly, so...
See if we submit maybe just the bulbs and if we just by going around and changing everything to LED bulbs.
Right, now, you're currently... Joel has been replacing bulbs and ballasts with LEDs. And he's been doing that in certain areas, the kind of the higher ceiling areas of your facility. So we looked at that with our engineers, and so they're making some recommendations for that, which would be a much more economical solution. And then they were going to run some paybacks for that. But I just got that information a couple days ago, so...
So when we did the pools, we did not redo the lights in the pool?
They did the lights, but when they did the pool in '06, they still used incandescent.
So unfortunately...
The amount of wattage we're using is crazy.
So when they did the pool, they didn't do proper lighting because of rusting and because they didn't do the air handling correctly, we... The life of this air handling has been shortened.
Yes. In a long... I mean, it's working fine now, but we...
It is working.
I mean, you... My first five years of my superintendency, I was a pool expert. I mean, not a pool expert, I was dealing with pool issues. And we finally have that all resolved, but we changed the motor, we changed the fan belts, we changed circuit boards multiple times because we had an undersized unit doing the entire pool.
That wasn't installed?
That wasn't, you know... So the bigger issue, though, is if you think about the 180 and the 350, 550, that still makes it into that 2 million that we're talking about with life safety.
The other fourth biggest item is on 102, at 42, it's the $200,000 offer to back pressure.
Which was on our life safety report. The reason I'm highlighting these three, the 180 to 550, is they're additions.
But they didn't always on our life safety.
Right, I was trying to recap everything for...
I don't see a dry erase marker on that whiteboard. I'm the type of guy that's a visual learner, but the reason I'm bringing this up to the board is the 180 and the 550, if we submitted that as life 50, or life safety, and we go for the 2 million in that, the example of providing, doing that working cash and other capital, that's an example of, hey, we find out that we can save this money and do all these LEDs, although the state may now approve it as a life safety amendment, you could apply that working cash money to go out and save us not only on our electric bills, but then do all the LED bulbs. There's some... There's a possibility the state may come and say, hey, we're not doing 3.5 million just for you to upgrade your lighting. But if we found the cheaper way to do it and had some money for that working cash capital, we can say, hey, well, let's go out and buy all the LED bulbs without using the district reserves, and not only will we get a return, we'll get some DCEO money, but we would also get a reduction on our energy bill.
The 3 and 1/2 million, is this to replace every fixture in this building?
Yes.
That are only tied to...
That is not LED.
That is not LED.
Because we have done some replacements already. Like I said, Joel has been working to do that.
Right.
And, you know, the wattage is half. It's half the energy, but it depends on how long... How much you run each space each day, right? That's how you calculate the energy savings. So it's not just, okay, yes, it uses less energy. We have to consider how long you use it, how long it lasts a year.
The idea would do this mostly in the classrooms, actually, classrooms and halls.
Right.
Because we've done most of the new athletic... We did the... And, well, obviously not the pool, but we did the gym, we did the field house. We put sensors in there with...
Yes, this includes like a dimmable system, so there's a... There's a lot that we...
Oh, so like automatic switches and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, right, right. So if nobody's in here for 10 minutes, the light goes off.
So there's some of this... I mean, this is probably the high end at 3.5.
Correct.
But the problem is, if we put it in and it's approved, then we have to spend the bonds on that. And if it only costs 3 million...
That's right.
Then we have $50,000 of life safety, but we'd have... We could spend on a new life safety project came up over the next period of time, right?
Yes.
How long do we have to spend it, Liz?
Three years from the time you issue.
Okay.
Well, that's the working cash. What about life safety as well?
Life safety as well.
You said there is some grant money for the lights. Just wait on that.
It's not necessarily grant money. The way we did it was you do the work and then you're reimbursed for a portion of the work, and then you start to see savings in your electric bill, which kind of offsets, so you're looking for payback. You're the energy expert, but I think that's how we did it in the past when we did the gym and the pool and that stuff, right? stuff, right?
Yeah, we've never gotten grants to pay.
It's not a grant. What, what happens is you-
We got some money from, uh, replacing lights.
Right, we got DCEO money, but you have to front-
Didn't pay for all of it.
You front the work.
Right, you, you pay it and then-
Then you got reimbursed some money. And then your energy bill was lowered the next three years and it offset the project. And I think after that was this-
Right.
Savings.
Savings.
So, I do kinda have a recommendation on this, and this is where I need your help, Carrie. I think with the, with the lighting, we either remove it, or we make it a significant less amount, maybe just figure out from our consult, your consultants, at least like what the bulbs are.
But you can't, replacing bulb is not a capital project.
I don't know if the state is going to approve that. We can do some research with it, but that's, you know, another option for you to do as a capital, it is, I, I would assume that that is a capital improvement project. I don't necessarily know if it's a life safety, energy conservation project that they'll recognize. I need to check. I, I believe it would be because it's energy conservation is a line item that is applicable to life safety.
Okay.
Didn't Joel kinda take the lead the last time we had a major part of the building replaced the LCD set? That he-
Yes, Joel and I, Joel and I met with a consultant. We brought the recommendation to the board. A consultant did all of our paperwork. And there were some companies, when the DCEO money was first out there big, there were electric, um, electrician companies that were out there and that way would do all your paperwork and do your DCEO refunds and, you know, they would get a portion of your savings for doing all that legwork. But this is much bigger. You're talking about replacing the lights and throughout the building, every single classroom, in every hallway, every bathroom, every locker room.
And switches.
And some switches and some ballast fixtures.
I mean, my, I would think that this doesn't go under life safety. We understand it's a 3.5 million dollar commitment. We get an estimate of what we think the annual savings will be and we then make a sound decision whether we wanna invest in redoing all these and see what our return on investment's gonna be down the road. But we don't have to commit to it under life safety.
That's right.
And then we can see that return on investment may be bigger or smaller based on grants that we eventually potentially can get.
That's why I'm asking, Carrie, like, I don't think we should submit this to the state. Right, I don't think we have enough information to say, let's try to commit. What if the state came back and said, yeah, you're approved for 3.5, you know what I mean? Then we eat up the 5 million we were talking about without even vetting this more.
Then we don't know what our return will be.
Correct.
Annual return.
But I do think the smart thing is the, the pool lights and the rooftop are two smart items.
I agree with that.
Because we, we service that rooftop unit a lot.
Yes, we do.
You know, and we've done everything to make sure it works, but what we don't, you know, it's like running your car with the pedal to the metal for the last eight years, 11 years.
Yeah, and as a parent of a swimmer, getting up at 5 o'clock in the morning to drive my kid to OPRF was not fun. So.
And so, I mean, we don't have any issues right now, knock on wood, in that pool. But in a year or two, if that broke or we need to start addressing that, that's a life, that's a definite air quality, life safety issue.
I, I like Gary's suggestion on the, on the lights. We, we need to make a determination whether for savings in school district to do that for such a big dollar amount. What do you think about it?
And you can pick and choose areas too. You don't necessarily need to do all of it all.
You could phase this in over five years.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, make the board, board room so the lights get dimmed and shake us out. Okay, can I ask a question? I've sorta lost my train here on this, uh, 2 million. Do we have 2 million already? If I did it in life safety and that's what these bonds would go for, or is this-
This for this list.
2 million is on this-
2 million's on that list, but out of-
About 6 million.
6 million's on that list. If you take off the 3.5-
And it's 2.5.
And you take off the 500,000 for the pool unit.
Yeah, but we're not-
Which we're not, we're not recommending, but the pool unit was not on the original life safety report.
Okay.
So it'd be 2.7 if we take off-
That's why Carrie identified the three big items that she had added on for, to the original-
All right, Carrie. Yeah, actually, the subtotal is 5.157.
Right.
And then we add 20, uh, you know, the 20% for, 10% for fees and then 10% for contingency. So you would actually back that out as well. So, so really, it's more of, it would be like a 2.1, right? Total. If you just took out the 3.5. Does that make sense?
And so my recommendation is we leave the pool, pool rooftop unit and the pool lighting. Everything else was already identified in our life safety and we roughly look at the 2 million for the state to approve that.
And there's no guarantee that all of these items are going to be approved.
Right.
In fact, they're most likely going to deny something. I just don't know which one.
Well, they haven't denied anything yet.
Yeah, they have.
Yes, they haven't.
And they reduce some of them too.
And they, yes, and they reduce the dollar amount.
So if it, they approve 2.6 million, we only have 2 million in working ca, and 2 million in working cash, can we take part of that 3 million to apply to the 0.6 or not?
If we take the three and a half out, what Carrie was saying, John, is you, there's another 20% because of the two holdings. So that's another 700,000. So that 3, 5 compares to 4, 2 out of the 6, 2. That's how they came with the 2 million. So we're roughly at 2 million?
Right at, right at 2 million if we take the lights out.
Okay, so- But getting, getting to John's question, if there is a differential between life safety expenditures going over the life safety bonds, can, if we go with the 3 million, can we, as long as this excess is capital related, can we use some of that?
Absolutely.
It's gotta be life safety related if it's life safety, that's right.
It's capital.
That's the re-
Capital.
It's capital, so you can- That's restriction. You can use, your life safety's gotta go 100% against life safety, but the, if we go with the additional 3 million and we have some excess life safety expenditures, we can bring that money over if it's capital in nature and life safety typically is capital.
If the state comes back and says, listen, your rooftop unit's not broken right now, we're not approving you to bond that. And two years from now, that broke, we can tap into that working cash if we borrow that. Cause that's a capital, major capital need. That's why I said it gives us some flexibility.
So 2 million seems reasonable.
So what I'm asking the board, my recommendation to the board tonight was that we approve the amendment of, of the, roughly the 2 million. Take out the 3.5, let Carrie begin the process of submitting it to the state, cause that could take 60 to 90 days.
Okay.
Now, we're hoping, because it's already August and most schools are already into their projects, the state should be a little slower now where they can review this and approve it so that we can go off for our life safety bonds in September, October with the schedule that Liz roughly read out in front of you tonight.
So, just turning to the schedule. The schedule incorporates both the life safety and working cash, but that's just so you know what the roadmap would be. Tonight, we're obviously discussing the refunding, the new money, life safety and working cash options, and the life safety amendments. And so now, if you approve those, Carrie will submit those for approval. Um, August, between now and August 8th, my thought is, do you have more conversation about the 3 million? What would we use it for? Capital, tax exempt? Do we feel we need a cushion? Uh, you can do part taxable, part tax exempt, sum, none? Get a, an idea, you know, Dr. Skikis was talking about some of the different options for that. But hopefully, you would have a decision by the August 8th meeting where we would review the projects again. And if you determine to move forward with some or any working cash, it would be at that meeting, we would recommend approving the resolution of intent to issue working cash fund bonds. That, then we would publish the notice of that intent in the newspaper along with the notice of public hearing. Cause you'd have to have a public hearing on both the working cash and the life safety, which would happen at your September 12th meeting. The petition period for the working cash would end September 15th. And then you would be looking at approving the resolution to issue the refunding, life safety and working cash bonds as you determine on, at your committee, the whole meeting on September 26th. That allows us to get into the market as soon as we can within that 90-day window for the refunding. It would allow us to issue all those bonds at the same time, which is gonna save cost of issuance, more efficient, and then close at the end of October. So that's when you get the bond proceeds.
And that's within the 90 days of the call?
It is, exactly.
And if we get postponed a month or two, is, how's that gonna affect things?
You know, my only worry is, the closer we get to December, the market gets crowded and we have the anticipation of the Fed rate increase in December. So, you know, there's, otherwise, there's no penalty for letting it slip other than the market risk.
What's the differential in interest rates between taxable and tax exempt?
That's a good question. So, if we did the 3 million on a taxable basis, looking at option 3A, where the tax exempt is 2.84, the taxable is 3.08%.
It's about 20-
About 25 basis points. It's not that big of a difference.
It's not that big of a difference. If we're looking at the shorter option-
The taxable means it's taxable to the people that are buying the bonds up.
That's exactly right.
Right.
So there's no difference to the taxpayer, but it gives us flexibility to use it.
To use it in any fund.
Any fund.
Yeah. So, on the shorter seven-year payback, or it would be six-year payback for the working cash, 2, 2.16 on the tax exempt, 2.61 for the taxable.
Oh, there's a much bigger difference there.
On the shorter payback.
So, the shorter end, I think, is a little higher right now.
Okay.
In terms of the differential, but lower than the longer rates, so. So, there is a differential, but it's not market. It's not outrageous and, you know, if you need that flexibility, it's certainly, um, still low interest rates.
Could you get us a sheet with the taxable one on it, so we can have a 3AA or whatever we wanna call it, a 3AT?
3C.
Or whatever we wanna call it. So that, it's in the back of our heads so that people will know the differential.
I'm thinking we might need Liz back in August. Right?
Yeah, cause that's what we, we need to, well, we vote today, but in August, we need to decide about the life safety then, right?
Reverse.
Today we vote on the life safety, which I think the-
And the bonds are on safety, yeah.
And I think we're gonna have several discussions on how, if, what we wanna do from a standpoint of 2 million only, 2, 3, or if, and we do 3, do we wanna break it up into tax on, so we're gonna have to have a hardened discussion.
Yeah, and-
But we still don't have to, we, we would have to make a decision in August, at the August 8th meeting.
Right, right, right.
To then start the petition window and the hearing.
Exactly, yeah.
Right. So we do the 2 million, life safe tonight, send Carrie home, much later than I thought.
Hmm, my fault.
And then we have Liz come back in August, prior to you coming back in August. Send me those sheets so I can get them out to the board. They'll have time to think on it, maybe talk with neighbors.
So then, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself. It'd be useful to have, to me at least, an extra page where you go from, um, like total interest costs and how you, how you divvy that up into per household. So-
And put it down to 300,000.
And maybe PV it. So in other words, I, you know, for the average household, whatever, I wanna know the total excess interest costs, say this for the second option, and then how you make that calculation to per household.
Well, she did it in the chart, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't see, I didn't see the total number.
Well, she has, in the 3A, she's got both the life safety and working cash total impact.
On the very last column.
All the way to the right.
This is the effect on the 300,000.
No, but I, I know that, but I wanna know where, where, I wanna know- So steps from like, okay, this, this one costs an extra 1 million in interest. Okay, how does that divvy up into?
So take like, for example, in option 3A, with a longer repayback on the life safety, put that impact on the home too, the life safety and working cash.
Well, I'm having a hard time following the total cost of this thing, PV and how that affects each individual homeowner. Cause all I'm getting is, well, saves them, you know, whatever, 30 dollars.
Looking at the, that impact, yeah.
But I want, I want the transparency on the calculation. That, that would help me.
Isn't that the column, though, the impact on a home, so in one year it went up $4, the next year went 2.17?
You, you wanna see the gross increase in the-
I wanna see the total number and then how it's divvied out. Yes, the interest.
What's on here?
The impact on, from the life safety bonds and the impact from the savings on the referendum bonds separately?
What he, what he's asking you to do is, if you go to page 12 of your report, on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, seventh column over, John, it's totals 12, 5. That would be the new interest we would pay. And then, if you go 1, 2, 3, 4, more columns over, it's what it is now. And the difference, you add the 12, 5, and the 40, 3, 9, you get to the 50, 6, 4, 71.
Break that into principal and interest?
That's what you're, well, yeah, what you want, that broken down differently. That's what you asked for, but are you looking for something different than that?
So it's 3, 6 for the 3 million, it's 2, 8 for the life safety, and then 12 for the refunding.
Uh, well, look, there's a foot in here. Option 3B has less interest costs, greater than 1 million versus option 3A because of the shorter payback period.
Right.
So what, I mean, what are the total interest costs in each one? And how does that, how do you divvy that up for each household? I'm, I'm sure your Excel already does this, but it's not, to me, it's not transparent here.
Cause the impact on the taxpayer includes both the principal and the interest.
Based on how you're amortizing it, you choose your levy of that. Well, see, I want, I want, could you just, look, I don't do what you do every day. You don't do any, but I just want something simpler that I can, I'm a smart guy. I can't understand this. I'm just saying I need some help. And if I can't understand it, a lot of people can't understand it.
We, we agree, John, and we, you know, we can, it's not clear what you want because it actually-
Well, I think, yeah, I'm not being-
It actually seems like it's in here. That's what we're looking for, what you want different.
Isn't it, you're in here, but I, it's hard for me to decipher it.
Maybe it's gotta be labeled, maybe it's gotta be labeled different.
You need to, you know, show this to more of a novice and say, okay, I wanna be able to understand these columns.
Do John-
I mean, the MP wants here. Is potentially a difference the column 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, column 9-
What's the heading in it?
Referendum current.
Referendum current versus the total proposed. That is truly your differential that you have to levy for, right? If you took the difference between the two, your new tax rate would be the difference to, to fund that, right, on an annual basis? Is that correct?
The tax rate has to fund that total proposed stuff.
Difference between, yeah, between the, so on, on 2017, we're going now to 5.7, where we would've been at 4.2, correct? Which is the referendum current? Is that my understanding correct?
Yeah, so what I tried to do on this chart is, with the two types.
No, but it's with the savings if we refund it.
Yeah. So-
So if you did nothing, we'd still be at 4.2 doing this with the savings, we're at 5.7.
Correct.
But John, you're looking for-
With the cost of being an additional .07 tax increase to, right?
But to the average taxpayer, they don't know how much, you're, you're looking for how much more money is the average household gonna pay, right?
Well, no, I think she's got that.
Yeah, she's got that down.
And I wanna, I wanna know how, more simplified presentation of like, total diff, if you look at the difference between these alternatives, you can break it up to interest and whatever, and then how it feeds into that.
So maybe a summary page would help.
You've got some formula in Excel, it's already doing this, and it's not transparent to me.
Okay.
A summary page, John, that would break down all the options of what you're saying?
So principal, interest in each option on a summary page, so you can see side by side how they compare to each other?
Yeah, I mean, the, the different, the difference-
Interest rate, principal, interest, savings.
Yes, yeah, how much we're-
So someone could look at one page and say, well, they should just do option 3C and that's a no brainer.
Well, exactly.
Okay.
Do you understand what he wants?
I'll work on it. I'll work on it and we'll-
Give me a draft, I could send it out in a week or so in a Friday update.
Dr. Skikis and you guys can give me some feedback and we'll get, we'll get-
Look, you've got Gary and Tim here, have to translate what I'm trying to think. So you got three bright people here and, you know, we have to understand this completely. Okay. So what we're gonna prove is Carrie going forward-
With the amendment.
With the amendment that says, these are the items that have been identified in life safety, but now we have to go to the state for the state to approve us to categorize them as a life safety expenditure. Is that fair to say?
Except we're gonna take out the 3.5 million dollars for our lights.
Right, right.
Well, I think the resolution just calls for the board to approve-
Life safety amendment is presented, discussed, we'll have to say, and amended.
Presented, discussed, and amended.
So, so to be clear, we're not going and approving, going out and, and, and creating debt today. Right? All we're doing is we're going and starting the process-
No, but if they, we submit it and approve it, we have to issue-
Right, but I mean-
So yes, we're approving life safety debt today.
Yeah.
Today is life safety debt.
And the maximum is gonna be around 2 million.
Do we have to do that? Or can we take it out of funds?
Once you submit, that's why I asked that question about an hour ago, I said.
Well, how you pay for it is up to you.
Right, see?
Oh, okay.
Well, that's why I asked that question. If, once you submit this to the state-
I thought you said you have to do it.
No.
You have to do it. And yes, you have to do it.
Right, but I'm, what I'm saying to you is, our, our backup plan here is, you start this amendment process with the state. If you come, if we come back in August and said, it makes a lot more sense to just do all working cash, we're not required to do life safe-
I still have to amend this. I still have to amend it and send it in and say, we're not using that cash.
We're not using life safety bonds, but we're gonna do the work with other funds.
Yes.
But that shouldn't take any kind of, like, they can't deny us to use life safety.
Well, they're not denying it, but, you know, the approval...
Well, but what I'm saying is, it gets two stones moving at one time. Gets you moving the amendment process forward with the state, while we hemming and hawing whether or not it's working cash or life safety. Right?
Yes.
Liz comes back with all her summary options in August, it still makes sense to do the life safety bonds. Once the state approves it, we issue a life safety bond. Correct? We have 30, we have the time it takes for the state to approve the amendment to figure out whether we want to use life safety bonds or all working cash, or half and half, or third, third, third.
Or none at all.
Or none at all.
There's always option two.
Right. Which is, you're just funding the life safety.
Right, just the two million. Just the 2 million.
Correct.
And that's a discussion we'll have.
We should get her rolling on the amendment with the state.
So everybody agree?
Everybody okay with that?
And be clear, I mean, we, you did a, you did a 10-year study several years ago, these are things that were identified. They, since we're aware, we have to address these.
With the exception of the line items we've just discussed.
Right, the lights, that's what I'm saying, and now, the light's already been thrown away.
Yes.
Well, we have to address it sometime in this 10-year timeframe.
Yes, it is your responsibility.
So 2022, right, we have the 2022?
2022 or 2023, I thought it was, but yes, it was done in '13. So the only line items that were not on that 10-year life safety report are 180 for the pool lights.
Which we're adding, right.
500 for the rooftop.
And we have flexibility of three years to actually.
Get that done.
Get that done. Five years, thank you.
Three years if we spend the money, we use the bonds.
What the bonds are is a different story.
Yeah, 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 all right, all right, five years.
Resolve the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County Illinois hereby approves life safety amendment 22 as presented, discussed, and amended in the July 11, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Call, man.
Mr. Reston?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
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 Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're good with both our...
I think we beat them enough, anyway. All right, it's time for any updates on... No, we haven't done anything. All right, visitor statements, do we have anyone on my left side, this side, anyone on this side for visitor statements? No visitor statements, I will not read that, man. Any additional discussion items that the board may want to bring up? Look to my right, look to my left, no. All right, the consent agenda items, action items, approval minutes.
Need somebody to read your resolution.
Can we get somebody to read that?
Our consent agenda is on the page 74.
Somebody wanna...
I'm too busy here.
Wanna read it? Can you read it from the screen? Can you read it from the screen?
I can't, I'm old.
Page 74 is...
No, it's 75.
75.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby takes the following actions, action on the listed consent agenda items approves the minutes from the open and closed meetings held on June 13th and 27th, 2017 as presented and amended in the July 11, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Walt, Mr. Walsh, second it.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
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 What else we have here?
Old business, life safety's done, just an update on the project outside Phase 3. We did a proof roll today. We're hoping to start putting the binder down, which is the application that needs to be applied to the gravel and subgrade surface before the asphalt. So the goal would be to have by the middle of next week, to have the tennis courts and parking lot, by the end of next week, tennis courts and parking lot asphalted.
What about, what about safety on the track, can we start opening that up pretty soon, or is that still...
The idea is August 1st, that we should be able to have all our fencing and all our subgrades and level changes should be filled, so that we can open the track to the public during, you know, sunrise, sunset. So only two more weeks, two and a half more weeks.
With appropriate signage, no dogs, no bicycles.
Already ordered, already, already, already delivered.
Okay.
So we should be able to open it up to the public the first week of August. Roof, there are two of the three sections besides the metal, which is like the cap, the cappings around the walls and stuff like that are already done. We had five sections that are being done, two are complete, one is being, is torn off and they're doing a temporary roof, and then we have two tear-offs going on, so the roof is on schedule, things are moving knock on wood with weather permitting, things are going well. The roofs will be done before school starts, the final touches like roof ladders, metal coping, and scuppers, which are like the drain that go to the roof drains and some of the gutter stuff, all that stuff will be, that's all stuff that can be on while students aren't attendance, but the crane will be out of here, the roofs will be done. Now, to keep things moving, one easy item, so we can go into the budget.
The tentative budget's got to go for something?
Sure. Okay, included in your board packet is tentative budget, the actuals are updated to 6:30, 17, so I was able to get those in for everybody. I apologize for the late change to the assumptions page with it. I did not have the actual reflected in the one that you received over the weekend, so that was updated this morning and sent back out on the assumptions page. Basically...
Can you, you said you, you still compared the numbers between the 2017 budget and 2018 budget, then the 2017 actual and the 2018 budget?
I have the actual of what is on the left-hand column on the assumptions.
No, but on the, throughout the whole report, your comparison is between last year's budget and this year's budget, then last year's actual, this year's actual. And this year's, not last year's actual and the present year's budget.
Okay.
You compare budget to budget?
Yes.
Yes, budget to budget. We're on budget to budget.
So you have to give us another report to compare us actual from last year to budget for this year? Because that's the reality of what happens in life.
Well, I understand, but, you know, I also need to compare budget to budget to see where we came in. What was the guessment was versus, you know, even though, I know what you're saying, you want to just look at actuals to what the budget is for '18.
Right.
And it, there again, like, I look at it where, okay, some things are gonna come in under, some are gonna come in over, totally understand, but as far as...
Scott, in the format, in the format, I think what he's asking for in the format, when you look at the budget, we should probably go and get to that after you do your presentation, why don't you go to your, start with your assumptions, or actually go a step further, why don't you go to what the board is, you're asking the board to do tonight, how much time they'll have?
All right, so what I'm asking the board to do today is approve tentative budget in this form, and we have August and September to basically update anything that needs to be updated and look at different numbers that are out there. But what I'm asking the board to do tonight is to approve it in tentative form, so that I can post it out there that this is the tentative budget that we're going to approve, I can put it out for public view from now until on the September board meeting, so that if there is any questions on it, they can come to the district office and view and make any comment on it. And this also gives a chance to look at any of the actuals and whatever the budget item is that are in the current one to make any adjustments or modifications. Staffing still isn't completely 100% done, so there may be some changes with it. Some of the state stuff still is up in the air, so I'll go through that, but, like I said, I'm asking the board to adopt this tentative form, and then I can put it out there for 30 days for public view, post it in the paper, and then make any necessary changes, and then a final budget will be adopted in September.
So we, your comparison on page 108 of at least what I have in front of me is, and we're showing a tentative deficit coming through this year. The primary driver of that is...
The biggest driver of that is the increase in certified staff salary per collective bargaining for new board members. Pretty much teachers from year 1 through 30 are receiving a $3,800 flat dollar increase. And just to make it very simple, we basically have 100 staff members that will be receiving $3,800. So that right there is $380,000.
We'll check your math on that. Years 1 through 20, anybody that was on that other part of the pay scale is getting only 2,100. Not everybody's getting 3,800.
Over 30 would get to 2,100. When we changed it from 28, 20B, anyone that was over 30.
Right, but there are all those teachers that were already off the scale.
Get 2,100.
Get 2,100, so that should have been about 18 to 20 teachers, right? Then everybody else, so out of our, so it's like 80 teachers.
Yeah, I was trying to put it in simple terms, just to try to calculate. And of course, this is guessing on our staffing projections on there with everything, all the turnover and everything. And then the next biggest item as far as expenditure would be the increase in three full-time teachers that was approved. And that's salary and benefits with that, which would equal the 210,000. So that's the majority of the increase in the expenditures.
What do you budget for one workstation or one FTE?
We try, well, I put in the placeholder at 55,000, try to bring them in at level one.
Right.
But then I also have to factor in...
I'm just asking you what your placeholder is.
A guesstimate as to, or like I take family insurance, so I try to put in 10,000 to 12,000 on that.
Okay.
So roughly 70,000 is...
Yes.
So right there between the two is...
That's your base, John.
600.
600,000.
Simple math, 600,000 of your...
Right.
Then everything else increases in expenditures correspond to any kind of revenue we increase, if we have revenue increases.
And ultimately, our revenue's not increasing as high as what the salary and those FTEs are going though, so that will be a major increase.
If you look at the first line of revenue, getting back to my point that you disagree with, and I'm not gonna change my mind, and just so you know, we had the same discussion every year with your credit staff, sorry. Since the taxes aren't gonna change much between the 5:30 and 6:31 dates, we're showing the effect of the revenue to be an increase of 179,000, but in fact, it's gonna be an increase assuming that actual's close to what it is of over 400,000, right?
That's the 6:30 actuals, 1,940.
I didn't take a look at what was added today.
Yeah, no, it was added today.
So with how you conceptually, commodically compare budgets, in my mind, when the year is over, last year's budget's a useless piece of information. Every line item is different, an actual versus what we budget, right? So if we're trying to tell the story, the story is, what did we actually incur last year versus what we're budgeting for next year? So we need to have this updated to have the comparison of the actual to the next budget, so we see what we think we're changing for this year. And I've done this before, I request we get that as soon as it's available, not ready till Friday.
It might be a hidden counter, it might be a hidden column in this, the worksheet you're working on, me and you can discuss it.
Yeah.
So for example, Scott, on that first assumption, you have the actual for June 30th is at 19 million, and the public can see that. Marion, you may need to increase the size of that from, so that it's not, looks like, doesn't look like braille dots. Keep going. Just move it over to, I'm saying, to the...
You want to see the four thousand and dollars. Keep going.
Keep going, other way.
To the right. There you go.
So right now, Scott, you're comparing, for the effect, you did actuals minus from the FY '18 budget, so it's 179. If you did the actuals, or if we did, you went from budget 17, and you said, from the difference to budget 18. If you did actuals, it's a difference of 258 instead of 179.
Yeah. Yes.
And the other reason it's important is because if that's right, I shouldn't say if that's right. So we came in almost $100,000 under budget on our real estate taxes this year, right?
It was, yeah, it was pretty close, almost.
Well, $100,000, that's a lot of money.
It is.
So we need to know how our, we were actual versus estimated, so we have a good handle of how we do it for next year, right?
So is the rest of the board agree with Tim's request that they would like to see budget versus actual, instead of budget versus budget?
Yeah, I think it's important, I mean, you could look at what you budgeted for state there, and you're showing some major increases in revenue.
So we'll change the, we'll change that column, so the formula addresses the difference. So I'm gonna change where it says effect, it will say budget versus act, different, budget versus actual.
And again, I'm anticipating you're gonna, once you get clarity over our state budget, I wish you well.
Yes, there's a lot of things that are gonna be impacted, obviously, we don't know what the general state aid formula is gonna be, it is up in limbo, roughly...
Because that bill has not passed yet, right?
No, it has not. So we do, we do not know exactly what it's gonna be.
But that's not favorable to our district anyways, is it?
I thought we broke, I thought...
We kind of break even, but I thought we were...
We're not losing, I don't...
I don't think we would lose, but I don't know if we're gonna gain on that. So what's in, what's in the current general state aid is 90% of what last year's projection was. We've taken a conservative approach to it, until more clarity is through with the state.
So what I'm hoping over the next two months, because technically the board approves the tentative budget tonight, and then we can always make changes to this, we present any changes to the board that we made in the next month in August, and those changes are still then viewable to the public for another 30 days till the board approves this at the September meeting. What I'm hoping by the September meeting is we have clarity on state aid and categoricals, so that if that deficit can come down a little bit, those are some immediate areas that we can address. The only other area to possibly address the deficit would be the second line item under significant revenue assumptions. We paid 158,000 roughly in tax refunds. We've always have budgeted roughly about four and a quarter. We know we have at least 170 still pending, with different tax appeals from large entities like the Country Club, some businesses that are still out there, and this is not, does not take into account residential tax appeals. So my thought on that is if we know we have 170, if we did double that, 340, we could possibly lower this close to 70 or 80,000. Which would help cut into that deficit a little bit.
But is this a reassessment year?
I thought last year was a reassessment. It is this year.
Because if it's a reassessment year, we could probably expect that there might be more, more appeals.
But that impacts future.
So that'd be two years from now then?
No, it really, they're appealing the increase in the assessment from what they had before, so they'll appeal that it might lower their future assessment, but it, chances are it's not gonna lower their assessment lower than what it was already. So we haven't seen the impact of the new assessment, and the appeals will lower what it would have been, but it'll still be greater than what it is now. Right, Gary, is that right?
I'm pretty sure you're right.
So my thought is, that would be one area I can adjust for August if the board wants to see that.
We do want, we want to get it as accurate as possible, I think. And again, just going back to make my point, if you just look at the two line items on that chart, the state and the real estate taxes, your column shows we're gonna have a 250,000 roughly increase, and in actual, we're having about a 250,000 reduction versus what the actual was last year, right? It's gonna be in the other direction.
Right.
So that's why I can't put my hands around myself a thorough analysis on this until I see how you're comparing your future projections against what we actually did this year. So, and again, Kevin, I would ask that if you can, you know, if it's done in the next week or two, that you just send it to the board so we have more time to look at it than just the weekend before the meeting.
Right, but I mean, tonight, you're gonna, we need it approved.
Right.
But I mean, yeah, that, we can, it will be posted, we can make the changes you want to see tonight and post it on, that on the website, where we just changed the column.
Oh, okay.
And then it's out there to the public.
That would be definitely, yes.
The point of the matter is, is roughly, the board is basically in concept of approving this tentative budget.
Yeah.
As far as tweaks to one line item or formatting, like going budget versus actual compared to budget versus budget, Scott can do that after tonight and post that publicly.
And if we're, we don't have any restrictions on what we change.
This is, yeah, this is a working tool, until we have the hearing. So this is out there for people to see if they want to come to the board meetings to identify a line... So this is out there for people to see if they want to come to the board meetings to identify a line item that they're concerned about, or expenditure they're concerned about, they're free to come and discuss it. But then you at least have it published out there for the people to see. We're still working on it and refining it, but it's out there for the public to start seeing what we're using as a framework for our tool. So do we need a resolution?
Yeah.
Well, can I ask somebody?
Well, there were some questions.
All right.
Yeah, and I'd like to go through it too, and just kinda for the new board members with it, just to clarify some stuff. Obviously, it's a work in progress, you know, it's always changing with it. Uh, on the revenue side, the big, you know, obviously, the big things are the general state aid. I'm gonna look at special education, transportation, cause the actual came in quite a bit lower than what was budgeted on that. I know that was an issue with one board member that submitted a question, it didn't look correct on it. So I'm still cross-referencing the numbers, obviously.
The federal.
Yes.
Federal was budgeted.
I'm looking at the transportation reimbursement for, plus then also our federal funds for reimbursement for women's work. I have not received an answer from our cooperative on where that federal comes from. Uh, it was budgeted for eighty-five thousand, and we received two-hundred thousand. So there is a big difference on the revenue there, I wanna kinda compare, see where did that actually come from. I have not gotten an answer as to what is the formula they use to, to calculate the proration for us. So I will look at that one and try to adjust it as best accordingly on that federal education reimbursement one. That's out there. The life safety, depending on what we do, this budget would probably have to be amended later on with, you know, with the, whatever happens with the life safety.
Bonds.
With the bonds. So that would be a whole nother process that we have to go through down the road. As far as expenditures that are out there, the big thing that we did was, which looks kinda weird, is took and made different accounts for all the different departments and tournament of board accounts. Previously, they were going into student activity accounts, so each department now has a department account, which accounts for the student fees that are being collected for the registration. So you'll see in there, there is department, or supplies department, supplies student. The supply student goes strictly towards the consumables that go towards the class. The department stuff is for the actual staff members and what they need to work within their department, just to clarify that. Athletic departments, you'll see no budget items under dues and fees, paid service, and supplies. All that was moved to the athletic office to basically have our coaches put in requests to work within a dollar amount. It's gonna be up to the athletic directors to prioritize and work with the coaches to determine what will be purchased as far as supplies. Same thing with what tournaments they're going into for the dues and fees, and then also how many games they play is the paid service for the referees. That's a shift, so you will see that in the athletic area where it'll be all zeroed out on that, on those columns. Uh, let's see here, I reflected the.
Scott, I mean, Mr. Smithing, a lot of your questions were student supplies and athletic offices, why there were zeros.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That assumption should address, that's where I was.
And I know this year, the Ladsy purchase service was under-budgeted significantly. This has been revised and modified, and I've been working with Ladsy. The estimate that is out there is very, very close to what our cost will be for our purchase service contract through Ladsy. And that's any needs that we have to fill within our building that we can't do internally, we purchase the service through our special education co-op. Electricity and natural gas, I solicited our companies and had them run me an estimate for the annual costs. Pretty much what came back is what's budgeted out there. So I'm trying to get this as close as possible to what I think the costs are. Big cost that is really difficult to anticipate is our insurance cost. I know overall, our medical went up five percent between our HMO and our PPO combined. And with open enrollment, people change from single to family, so you're trying to capture the best that you can. New employees come on, I don't know if they're gonna take single or family, so costs do fluctuate a little bit on that. So I'm trying to get the best estimate as to what I believe our actual cost will be for the medical. Obviously, that will change as our staffing changes and different enrollment periods go with what insurance they pick. But these will all be monitored and tracked and brought back, and I wanna make sure that this is as close as estimate as I can get to for this FY eighteen budget.
Scott, just, why don't you touch on some of the general questions?
Okay. As far as the assumptions that are out there.
I think your assumption explanation covered most of those questions, I'm talking like, one was submitted about the forty-five hundred for the state police.
Oh, that's one.
That's not, that's not the budget.
Oh, that's for the.
That's not part of the budget.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Some of the ones were like textbooks, why is it going up when we're trying to go more to the one-to-one initiative? We still have to pay for the license for a lot of the online textbooks. So even though we're going to the one-to-one, they still get you with the licensing denied.
Was that just one, but, did you ask that question?
I did.
You know, we, every year, they present a budget, a three-year budget for us, a projection on textbooks and licenses, and then they refine it for the current year. So when would you do that, Krista, about February? In February, she did a presentation for what she thinks we need to replace old books or whatever for next year, and the board approved the textbook budget, so it should be matching what we approved.
Exactly.
Okay. It was before you got here.
No, that was more just a question of understanding how that worked.
And I always had a little bit, not knowing how many transfers are gonna come in with it. Sometimes we get a huge slew of transfers depending on when CPS starts with it, so we try to build a little, a little bit in there, just in case we have to get some extra licenses or additional books with it. I moved the instructional software from our general instruction into the technology department, just so it can be overseen by our tech director. That's any additional instructional software that's used in any department with it. There is an increase from last year on that one of roughly twenty thousand. But as you go to the one-to-one initiative, in order to keep up with that, you have to be more innovative and try new things. So some of these things that are put out there are a classroom license versus a all-school license. They're the pilot first, to see if it actually works, and if it works and it's successful, then next year, we recommend that you put in for the full site license for the department. Or for the school. There were questions submitted on the real estate calculation. Just if you could go to that tax calculation on one-ten, I'll go through that and how I got the projections. These projections are based on the levy extensions from the county. So the first column that says two thousand and sixteen levy, that's what our levy extension is through the county. In order to calculate what you're gonna get prior year and current year, you actually have to look at multiple levy years. So second column is tax extension levy fifteen at fifty-five percent. And then you take our extension from sixteen minus the difference, so our August collection is where it says August is anticipated to be there, and it's prorated at ninety-eight percent for collection. Which would get us the column that's expected at ninety-eight and a half. And then the two thousand and sixteen levy, that is the first column, at fifty-five percent for each fund, that's out there, and then it's prorated at ninety-eight percent. And that's how I come up with the calculation for our tax collection.
But the question I asked was, isn't the first one fifty-five percent of the prior year, and the next one the difference?
Yes.
The two assessments in the same year aren't fifty-five percent of anything, right?
That is correct.
So, but your spreadsheet shows you did fifty-five percent for both of them.
Yes, that, that is correct with.
It looks like it's a hundred and ten percent then.
Right.
Let me ask it again, cause you said, yes, that's correct, to two different, to the same thing. One assessment each year is fifty-five percent of the prior year, right?
Yes.
The second is the difference to meet the total, right? So why do we have fifty-five percent for both assessment periods on this spreadsheet?
Because the second half would be the remainder, which should roughly be near forty-five percent.
Right, why do you have fifty-five? You have to say fifty-five percent of both of them, that's the question I asked.
So do you.
Is it catching the law?
Are the dates the correct dates? You have a March seventeenth in two columns.
Mm-hmm.
Does one a March eighteenth?
No, that, uh.
You have March eighteen.
Expected March eighteen, yeah, the fifty-five, um, yes, the column that says two thousand and sixteen levy at fifty-five, March should be eighteen. And then it says expected in March of eighteen.
Okay, so for fiscal year, budget year, should I be looking at column August of seventeen?
So.
Plus?
You're looking at August seventeenth, that would be your, that's our prior year.
So that's forty-five, that's what I'm gonna get in August, the seventeenth, so I'm gonna get the forty-five percent.
That's a second assessment for that year, right? So that's not fifty-five.
I'm gonna get forty-five percent because I'm taking column sixteen million minus the nine million to get the seven million. That's what, so I'm budgeting the seven million plus the nine million, which.
Eight point nine.
Eight point nine, cause you gotta dump, you gotta reduce it down to what you expect your collection to be.
Right.
To get the sixteen point two.
So all you should do is just highlight those two columns.
So what you should do is, yeah, show the columns you're adding.
So it shows that's how you're getting your taxes for the budget.
Okay.
Cause it is kinda confusing to see the fifty-five.
And you could, if you wanted, if you wanted to, you could put, for instance, above the August.
And then make that March.
Remaining forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent.
And make that March eighteen.
Okay.
Right?
Okay, that's just how you get it.
All right.
Um, let's see here, budget questions. Nothing out of the, no, nothing in regards to the actual budget questions with the rest around the place.
Okay, so.
All right, could we get a.
Any other questions on budget, everybody was good?
I won't ask a question, but I'm gonna make a comment, I already talked to Kevin about it. The thing that I think we need to look the closest at is, and he brought one or two of them up, how did we do actual versus budget for last year, which we have in your monthly report? And how we should adapt that into the budget, because if you go back, every year, we over, we underestimate revenues and overestimate expenses. And that's why I highlighted that on here, we're, between the two of them, we're four hundred thousand dollars above and a positive on our budget. But we're showing what a roughly six hundred, what's our deficit that we're showing?
Five fifty.
Five fifty, well, if we're overestimate, underestimate revenues, overestimate expenses every year, can we be a little tighter? And then we don't have to say we have a five hundred and fifty deficit if we really think it's gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand at the end of the year. That's one, one thing that I think we should take a close look at between now and finalizing the budget.
Okay, and there is, like you said, like I said earlier, there is a lot of stuff that's still up in the air.
For next year.
For next year.
I understand.
And that deficit.
Maybe that's a reason, you wanna be conservative, cause you don't know what the state's gonna come up with, if that's the reason, that's the reason. But I think we should have that, and you should say that part of discussion rather than just go through, oh, here was last year's, here's this year's, we're raising it. And again, we're gonna have, you know, at the end of the year, we're gonna be four hundred thousand dollars more positive, and what we're telling people we are. I don't think we should do that on a annual basis.
We should try to get, I, I think by lowering those property, I mean, that's.
Well, I mean, the big variance we've had each year is the fact that we don't budget six hundred thousand of appeals.
Right, we've got, we budgeted four twenty-four. We've been doing it now. We budgeted four twenty-four, and we came in at a hundred and fifty-six.
Right.
And then last year was the first year we cut it down a little bit, but it's been fair that we were always.
So the property tax appeals have been big, because if you think about it, we're still delinquent on a couple hundred thousand from the state in their categoricals.
Right.
Right. So we're budgeted six twenty-five, we're supposed to get six twenty-five, we've only collected threesome.
But we, isn't there always a catch-up in the following year?
You hope so.
You hope.
Yeah, but I mean, so far, that's what's been happening, right?
Yeah, you usually receive a payment.
Yeah, so.
You want it to show in the next, in the next fiscal year.
Which we want to show.
What Scott and I started to do is try to make a little short list of here's items we think we could possibly reduce or increase to help address the deficit.
Okay.
But I will say to the board, the best practice is still underestimate on revenues and overestimate on expenditures.
Why is that a best practice?
Well, I think you'd wanna be prepared for worst-case scenario, not best-case scenario.
I, I would not describe that as a, I think being accurate is a best practice.
Well, if I could see what the state's gonna pay, I mean, that would be, I think I would, I'd be down in Springfield, I wouldn't be in R B, right? So I make.
Maybe.
Might be safer here.
We, we try to be as accurate as we can with some moving targets.
You want me to read the resolution, Gary?
Please.
Wait, can I, can I just ask something else?
I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm trying to get a handle on this, and I've been doing this for eight years, and it's still confusing to me the way it's presented. Partly because you're in the trees, and I'm like on the balcony looking down on the forest. I'm, I mean, I totally agree with what you said, it makes sense to, if you're gonna budget, it's gotta be based on it. And I had this discussion three years ago, I remember. Why don't we, to me, it's common sense, it should be based on what the actual expenditure was, why are we comparing the two? The other thing is, when you have two columns, budget seventeen, actual seventeen, I mean, there should be a difference right there, so, cause that's. You're making me in my head do a calculation, it's silly, there should be a separate column of net. Okay, you might have done that initially in your report earlier, but I mean, I'd like to see it here. So that's just a comment, and if I, there's one thing I like to do, Kevin, this shouldn't be too difficult at all, and this goes along with your point, Tim. If we can just go back, you know, five years or whatever, budget fiscal year, what's net income? Actual net income in that same year, and what's the delta? And that'd be two things, we can show actually what our net income's been for the last five years, and you can see we've been basically at a balanced budget.
We did that on the spreadsheet.
It is?
Additional spreadsheet.
Yeah.
That I worked on from two thousand and ten to two thousand and seventeen.
Listen to the question he's asking, your spreadsheet does not show what he's asking. You're showing the, you're just showing the actual, how the change was every year. He's asking you, which is what I did, is show for each year, what was the budget, what was the actual, what was the difference? So just make sure you, you do have an additional spreadsheet, but it doesn't do what he.
Right, so I'm, I'm trying to condense the thing to the, to like one page, whatever, so we can, there it is, and then you can go backwards to figure it out.
But what, what is the purpose of having a historical budget, five-year budget?
Because it tells us how often we are every year.
No, no, the actual tells you the trend, budgets don't tell you the trend. No, I. Actual tells you the trend.
What I'm, what I'm looking at that, at that one you add where you do all the years from two thousand and ten to sixteen, you don't have seventeen, you don't have the budget.
Right, I mean, he's gotta put that in there, he's gotta add that in.
It says, uh, waiting for the actual.
Gary.
So we have the actuals.
The budget to actual decides whether the best practice is a best practice. What, if every year, we're underestimating our revenues by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and we're overestimating our expenses by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, even as the numbers are changing, we keep doing that. This best practice we have makes us show our deficit at the beginning of the year is five hundred thousand greater than we really think it's going to be at the end of the year. That, that's, that's what, what my concern was, that's been my concern.
All right, let's, let's address a couple of questions, the actuals weren't supposed to be submitted until August. Cause we got them from the treasurer, so you put an extra time on Friday to dump them in the budget so that the board can see them this weekend, so the spreadsheet.
Well, wait a second, the actuals should be available when they're available. If it's busy at this time of year, it's busy at this time of year, the board only meets once a month now.
All right, let's, let me, let me, let me finish. When this was presented to the board in June, you had it with the May thirtieth, and you had a month to look at it.
Right.
We have to wait for the township treasurer to close it, then somebody hand enters it into our budget. So if we get it on Thursday morning, and the board packet goes out Thursday evening because of vacations and things like that, you won't get it, you were supposed to not get it till August. get it till August. We were gonna update it from the July meeting to the August or shortly after that. We were gonna get it to the board with the June thirty actuals. So Wes was asking, asking why the spreadsheet wasn't updated with the actual. That will be updated this week. So you'll have, that will be updated online, so you can see that to the budget.
With the budget on?
Tim will, Tim was asking why the assumptions don't compare budget to actual. But if you look at the actual budget, there are multiple columns that compare budget versus actual. The last two columns...
The numbers.
Compare budget of eighteen versus seventeen actual, either the increase or the decrease, and the percentage change. So that was already implemented when you asked that from last year. If you look at the actual budget, like I'm looking at page just general one eighteen, it's got, the first column is actual for six thirty, final budget, then I got the eighteen budget, then it gives you all the differences, budget versus budget, budget versus actual.
What page was it?
One eighteen starts on the expenditure side.
Expenditure. So actually, it's giving...
It's not on the assumption.
It's just not on the assumptions, but the entire budget was done, so as you can see budget versus actual.
Well, I'm probably not gonna go that far, because it didn't start at the top, and I wasn't gonna read the whole thing to figure it out. It, it's not, they're all not like that.
That, I, I, that's the revenue side, when you look at maybe the...
Well, you have to read through about ten pages where it wasn't done that way.
The revenue was not done that way.
I read through your expenditure, you didn't do it that way, I stopped looking at the report. I didn't go to say, oh, well, we're do, I didn't think we were doing section of the report with a different format.
So Scott, we have to figure out why your revenue side didn't show the same thing the expenditure side, because you have done budget versus actual.
Okay.
And we probably could eliminate the budget versus budget, because it sounds like the board doesn't want it.
I agree.
So although, Tim beat you up there for five minutes, he did, I'll take two and a half minutes of it back. Because he did half of it right. So you gotta fix the revenue side.
Yeah, but doing half of the, at the bottom end of a report, it's not, let me just tell you, as a board member, I start at the beginning, if I get the points that aren't right or don't make sense, I'm not gonna read through the rest of the fifty pages and see if it gets better.
So we gotta fix the revenue side.
Okay.
And then you could fix the, we'll fix the assumption side, so it's budget versus actual.
Actual just versus budget.
Right. So from what I'm hearing from the board tonight...
So, so here, here's...
We wanna eliminate this budget versus budget, because no one cares. Because what I don't want is next year, we're doing a budget, John to lean over, take off his glasses and say, it would really help me to see budget versus budget.
I never, I have never said...
Just wanna make sure I got four board members...
No, no, because here's, here's my dilemma with this, if you don't include that. So let's take state aid. You only received four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars this year, your bu, and you had a budget of six twenty-five last year. You're budgeting six twenty-five again this year. Say they got their act together, you're only, you're actually gonna get eight hundred thousand this year.
Well, yes.
Because you had the shortfall, you had the shortfall from last year, plus the six twenty-five that you, you calculated based on the state aid formula. So how, all of a sudden now, should we be budgeting eight hundred thousand? Or should we budget the six twenty-five?
We budget the six twenty-five.
You know, that's the question.
Because the auditor, right.
My only concern is it kinda defeats the process of meeting with every department, going through what they think are priorities, what are needs, and sitting down and actually going through it with them.
But see, that's, but that's... But wait, wait a second.
But that would eliminate if I just do, you know, if you're just doing actuals, I might as well wait till the actuals come in and just say...
No, not at all. You're doing, you're, look, what you're doing with them is, is great, I'm sure it's great. I'm talking about as a board member, looking at this, trying to figure it out. Okay? And I have a problem when I see half a million dollars of loss. I have a real problem with that. So I wanna be able to understand this in a historical perspective, and is it meaningful? Okay? That's where I'm coming from. What you're doing day to day with the budget, I understand it, but see, Kevin, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we're good. Although we need...
I would not, we, I, some people wanna see budget versus budget. In me, my mind is a secondary determination. The actual first budget is the primary determination, because that's what really happened versus here. But I agree with Gary. And I think that's why it's set up this way. Sometimes when you're looking at it, you're seeing, well, how did we compare the budget to the budget? What really changed there? I don't think you need to change the format of the report, I just think it needs to be filled the way that for the whole thing.
You gotta have, you gotta have both, you gotta have both of them, you gotta have both of them.
We're okay.
It's, it's important to see actual, probably more driven from the expenditure side. On the revenue side, you know, the loosey-gooseyness of the state, the timing of payments on that, we, we just need to see why, you know, if there's a shortfall from past year, to understand that it potentially could be put in next year, or potentially, we're gonna still have that timing issue, who knows? But it's, you know, I, I think it's important that you see both.
Just do, just do the revenue side exactly like you did the expenditure side. And I bet you the columns are there, they're just hidden in the worksheet that you've been doing. So it shouldn't be a big adjustment. You know, all we have to do is adjust the assumptions. The spreadsheet that the Finance Council asked us to do, I think, what you see there, FY seventeen actuals and FY eighteen budget, that should give you like, a trend then of what's been going on here since two thousand and ten.
And the reason why you did that summary sheet up above is to try to highlight the major points. And the first question I asked was, what's driving the half a million dollar deficit? And you pointed directly to two items, additional staffing and a increase in payroll, those are greater than CPI, which we're typically in the revenue side getting, we're staying, we're keeping state flat from a budget standpoint. And the pay, the property taxes are only increasing at a, what was it last year?
Point seven.
Point seven. Right. And yet, we're six hundred, what was that, between the staffing increase and the, and the?
Roughly six hundred.
Yeah. And everything else, expenditure-wise, we're arguing is staying at CPI, theoretically, I mean, if you top your head.
All right, so, just so the board understands it, Tim likes to see one thing's one way, John wants to see one thing the other way, so usually, the reason why I kinda bring it back to the whole board is so that we're not creating seven individual...
John asked for the exact same thing I asked for.
I like, he gave me just, what I'm saying is, I just wanna make sure for the majority of the board.
I think it's fair to hear from the new board members, if they, what they had problems with, and, and what they would like to see if there's some changes on what the...
Well, I, you know, I, I put in a lot of questions, but I liked that you gave me the history on this one, I didn't have it last time.
Right.
So I, you know, that, that's really what I was looking for.
Okay.
Is that history, the trends, right? Because I don't necessarily know the trends, I haven't been around six years, so I was like, where is, where is this? So that was one of the things that, that I wanted. I, I was fine with the, I, I understood why the effect was the budget versus budget, because the actual wasn't done. I, I got that. And I, but I didn't know where it was last year. So that's why I was like, if I had a sixteen, then I would know where, where it ended up after two months or whatever. I could see where things trend at the end of the year, all of a sudden you have a big bill for this or not for this or whatever.
I don't, I guess I feel silly now that I printed out like, the last four or five years that were on the website, and I had it all laid out, and I guess I don't need to do that, because you guys are like, no! And...
Oh, it's there, it was there, it just was on the back page.
Okay, well, I'm good. I got it all figured out. I mean, not all figured out, but I made it work for me, for what I needed to do for my brain, so I'm good.
Yeah, I understand it, like, I, I didn't have any problems with that. I'm sorry. I know, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's...
Makes sense.
Any...
I'm good, don't lose any columns, Scott, you can always add, don't lose any. Don't ever delete a column.
All right.
Let me read the resolution then.
Yeah.
The Board Education Township High School District, Tulaco County, Illinois hereby approves and adopts a budget containing estimates of amounts available in each fund as a tentative budget for said school district for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen eighteen, and it further resolved that this tentative budget found adoption by this Board of Education shall be made conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least thirty days prior to final adoption thereof at the September twelfth to two thousand and seventeen Board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
When will we get the budget out? Web submission.
Once these change...
Another week or so.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Towne?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Ossoff?
Yes.
Yes. So this budget's gonna be going around for several months, so if there are concerned taxpayers who wanna come in and discuss this...
Be on the webpage, it's posted as a tentative budget as well.
And we have two more meetings before?
Yes.
We have the...
No, we have one.
One meeting, and then we'll have the actual.
And then you'll have the public hearing.
Public hearing. But they could, taxpayers could come in ahead of time if they have issues.
Out there publicly for close to sixty days.
All right.
July till September.
Great. All right, what do we have next? Vending machine contract.
There were no questions submitted, the attorney had reviewed everything, we're going with Workwell Vending. I believe we're at a point where the board can approve it.
Let me read the resolution.
Go ahead, please, somebody read it.
Result, the Board Education Township High School District, Tulaco County, Illinois hereby approves the three-year vending contract with Workwell Food and Beverages Company as presented in July eleventh, two thousand and seventeen Board Agenda Packet.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Before we vote, there was a couple of questions in here, did you resolve them? Like, there was a question where they could increase the fees more than once a year, and they wanted to have it written.
I read through those, I, I had quite a few questions, but I think they were pretty much answered on that.
But you resolved them.
Yeah, on the final headline version, it was all answered in there.
Okay.
The only difference between the proposed one and what this final one was, with leaving the language where it was only changed one time per year, the vending company is taking all the risk on that.
Yeah.
And then also having the sixty-day termination, written termination clause in there, the only problem with that was, the signing bonus will be paid out at the end of the year versus the beginning of the year to cover further liability of the upfront costs of putting their machines in. That was the only difference with it.
They all got resolved as far as I was concerned.
Thank you.
And addressed everything then. Mr. Walsh had it, Mr. Smith had it.
Thank you.
All right, can we put the vote?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Towne?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Ossoff?
Yes.
Mr. Edgley?
Yes.
Yes. The new business, naming the bills, there are questions.
There was one bill that the board was notified today of. So usually how this works is a construction manager submits a pencil copy of the bill of all the subcontractors' work, the architect confirms that percentage of work has been completed, signs off on it, then the district puts it on its bills list. Because the bills were submitted at the end of June, and then the architect, there were some issues with the architect's office in the Fourth of July holiday, we didn't receive final approval till today, the construction manager had a concern of then holding, basically, our subcontractors going almost sixty days with no pay. And so that's why the, the bill was added this morning.
But, you know, I go with the recommendation on it, but that agreement is really clear, when they have to get them in, we have thirty days to review them, and we also, the payment terms are based on the, what's the name of the payment act that we have?
Prompt Payment.
Those people go, like, Prompt Payment Act, which we have another thirty days to pay. And my really concern is, we keep getting these things added at the last minute to the board to have to review and think about, and in that instance, we have no duty to pay them today. And again, if you wanna pay them, I don't have a problem doing it, but I have a problem that, you know, Scott was talking about jumping through hoops for the board to get a report together. Well, if you're gonna jump through hoops, I think you should do it for the board, so we can look new to the budget. But I don't know why we're jumping through hoops to pay people that we don't even have a duty to pay today. That, that's what my concern is on that, whether, you know...
We only have one board meeting in July, so what, by the board approving this bill, we can sit on the check for thirty days.
Right.
We can sit on the check for twenty days.
Right.
But I won't see you then till August eighth, if I wait till then for you to approve it.
Right.
So by having you approve this bill, gives us the authority to sit on the check until we can, you know, have more time to review it if there's an issue. So that's what we've been doing the last two times, because of our board meeting schedules lining up with when they submit the work.
But I, I can guarantee you, but I didn't pull it out, we have a lot more than two weeks to...
Absolutely.
...the board approve a, a payment for that, under that construction agreement.
You're right.
So, again, I'm just making a suggestion, and I've asked Gary this before, I think we should avoid to the extent we can, amending the board package after Friday. Because we all have jobs, and then we get emails, and then if we have time, I was traveling today, I can't read everything on Tuesday afternoon. So if we don't have a duty to pay them, let's just tell them they have to wait till the next time, but what are they gonna, they, they can't walk away, we're not breaching the agreement, we don't even have a duty to pay them right now. So, I mean, it's just as an example, but I, I personally would ask Gary to talk to you, to say, let's try to not be rushing things through on Tuesdays when we don't have a need to do that. That's really what my point is. I just personally think we should avoid that last plague. But Kevin wants to have it approved, there's not a reason we can't approve it. I mean, we owe them the money, it's just a question whether we had to push it on the agenda today.
I mean, I, in general, I usually hold the check till I get the official signed off copy from the DLA.
Right.
So it's not like they're getting a check tomorrow.
So even though the check's cut, they're not getting it tomorrow.
But you see, you're looking at something completely different to me. At some point, I don't care what your process is, but I do care that we keep rushing things in the board package and haven't come after, you know, once a month we have a board meeting. We should try to get everything in the package on Friday, so the board only has to look at it once. And not on Monday we get an update, and on Tuesday we get an update, and people have to decide whether they have time at lunch, or take away from their work to review it, or just ignore it, which I hope you don't want us to do. So it's, it's more the board process I have a concern with. It's, I'm sure you're paying improperly and all that kind of stuff, but why add something to ask the board to take a look at another $700,000 payment if it didn't have to be done for this board meeting? That's what my concern is. You see what I'm saying, Kevin?
I understand your concern. I will say that the ebbs and flow of the school district and the board package going out, it doesn't work like that all the time. I mean, it's just not real, especially in the summer, we have all these people that have vacation days, use them or lose them. So, I mean, I can't tell Mary Ann, hey, you got to stay here till Friday, because we didn't get the contract back on vending.
I understand.
So the package goes out on Thursday, if the contract comes in on Friday, and we want you to, we need to approve it, because we need a vending machine by August, we're going to have to drop it in there first thing Monday. I mean, sometimes that's going to happen.
Right.
I mean, I get today, this is an example of like, we should have went, we could go back to the construction manager and say, hey, we're holding the check, or you know what, the board didn't approve it till August, if they're within their 30 days. I, so I mean, this is probably a bad example, what I'm trying to show-
It's a good example for me.
Right.
Okay. But anyway, so we had some, we have other questions on the bills, Gary?
There was one submitted about the 4500, we pay that money upfront to the state police, and then it's kind of like, they withdraw every time we submit a back-
It sits there.
Every time we submit a back, right? Yes. And then when it runs short, we re-up it.
We were down to $2.50, so we re-upped it to what was spent in the past. See, my pages are all messed up with the questions. There was a question submitted on a rego. The communication card burned out, had to be replaced and actually rewired. The splice wires, we're trying to get around the actual burned-out card, keep it functioning till the card came in. So that was a rego on board book page 152, that was the $5,208 invoice.
So we spliced the communication cables?
We tried to do it in hopes of keeping it running.
They, they, keep it functioning until the card came in, till the communication card came in. So everything was replaced, rewired, working, functioning.
It's expensive cutting of cables, isn't it?
But that was the-
And we were, they were running?
The burned-out card, trying to bypass it.
So did we bypass it, and we were running?
We were running, but eventually we had to fix it.
No, I'm just saying, by cutting cables, we bypassed.
It worked. Let's see, let me just make sure I got these right.
There was one on legal services on 154, why frantic was broken in three groups.
Three different groups. It broke it down into what services?
It was more like, it was really, why we spent $32,000 on frantic, it seemed like that was a lot.
That was the May and June invoice.
Okay.
The majority of, a lot of it was on special education cases, due process.
Okay.
Countacum and Alta, in order to get out of the, finalize the lease, we had to make the last two payments for the copiers to get out of the five-year deal.
We paid to get out of the five-year deal?
Well, that was expiration of the five-year contract, we had two invoices left.
Now we get a free month from our new vendor.
New vendor, we get a free month, so July is free. Our first payment for our new vendor will start in August. So that's why it looks like it ran over. Police, Lenovo, that was on page 156.
Right.
We're replacing computer lab 258, this was part of the presentation for obsolete computers.
What's computer lab 258?
It's an auto CAD lab and a general lab.
It's a classroom.
So in order to run a new software for the auto CAD, you got to update, support the newest three year suite.
Thank you.
I think that's it for bills. All the, you know, retirement incentive options, there are several rules out there. These are benefits from prior collective bargaining agreements that retirees receive up until every year. They reach 65, and I believe-
10 years or-
10 years or Medicare.
Medicare kicks in.
It's a one-time payment?
No.
No, it's annual.
No, but I mean, yeah, once a year, they get that amount.
And Scott, you're making sure they submit proof every year?
Yeah, they have proof every year that they have to show.
Submit, right.
Mm-hmm. And I think the rest of the stuff was on checklist things. There were some questions on, for example, summer camps, basically our revenue on summer camps, we run it through to try to be cost neutral, we need to have a placeholder on it so that we can track on it. It may look like it's over budget, but it's really running cost neutral, we just need to be able to account for it. So you will see some on the revenue side, some on the expenditure side, but at the end, when we take all that, it's all cost neutral to the district.
They do a report on that after the summer to show that it was cost neutral for us too.
There was another question on age group gymnastics. Just so everyone knows, it was budgeted on the expenditure side for roughly 90,000. We did run over on that paying anybody that is helping out with it, but on the revenue side, it actually generates 60 to 70,000 for the district with the fees that they pay. So it is offsetting and actually profiting for the district. Basically, why that ran over was just the cost of run graduation between all the diploma covers, the chair rental, the increase in the tassels and the cords, there was a lot more this year compared to last year. Then there was also some invoices that ran from the 15, 16 year that didn't make it into the prior year, which got paid in this year, so there was an over欠 account.
Doesn't tell anything to principal, she'd have to cover that or-
Absolutely. But she was under budget in the other accounts.
Do we have a, did we already have a resolution? We have got a second?
We did.
No, did we? All right, so we go for the vote?
Did we read the resolution?
Or did we read the resolution? No, we haven't.
Result that the board of education township high school district 208 county Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in July 11 2017 board agenda packet.
Second.
Ms. Towne? Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
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 Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes. We have one additional item, a course title change.
I explained that in the beginning of the meeting, that because the program is, we're addressing a program, we're moving a teacher from Lancy into our building, which is a little more cost savings for us, as well as it provides us an opportunity to evaluate and supervise that program. Kristen and Sheila are combining that with our current social emotional thinking class, and it's going to put under a new name, so just to stick with the process the board has approved over the last several years, it's a course title change, but it wasn't something that was identified that needed to be happened, and we brought this in October. So for consistency purposes, I just wanted to bring this to the board and have you take action. Casey saw it on someone's schedule, or someone asked about it, but there were no surprises.
I thought it was very self-explanatory, except I didn't understand where you said two populations. Could you tell us what the two populations are?
Yes, so social thinking course, in previous years, it is primarily for students that are on the autism spectrum.
Okay.
And study skills for social emotional learning is for students that have emotional disabilities.
Okay, thank you.
So you need a motion, somebody would read the motion?
Sure. Resolved that the board of education township high school district 208 county Illinois hereby approves course title change for a special education department for the 2017-2018 school year as presented in the July 11 2017 board agenda packet.
Second.
Go for the vote?
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
Mr. Dardukin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Towne? Yes.
Yes. Okay, we got matters for closed session personnel. We don't have any students?
I don't think we have any students.
No students? Do we have any real property issues?
Possibly.
Purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent and pending litigation, and collective negotiations. Now, is it second time for visitor statements? Does anyone in the audience have any statements? No statements?
Wait, I'd like to ask a question, make a statement.
You got to come up, Mike.
Yeah, read that ridiculous.
It's going to be less than three minutes?
You got it.
I'd like the board, I'm Mike Hiney, you're going to be looking at something on me becoming a volunteer tennis coach soon, and I'd like the board to consider painting the tennis courts RB blue, I don't know what you guys have already thought about, lines white and the outside green.
I think we already went through those, because I think they're going to be green with white lines.
Well, line's got to be white, but-
Yeah, I think we had looked at different colors, I think the paint colors were already submitted, because they're painting them like next week, so.
All right.
But we did consider-
They considered blue, there was a reason, it was recommended we did-
The fading after a while, and then the resurfacing.
We could, if the architect was here, she could tell you why.
But we did look at that, Mike.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right, there was no discussion items, so now we go to consideration of items for future-
We were going to try for-
Meetings.
Yeah, the consideration of future meetings doing that.
A little bit ahead.
Correct.
Because the people, there was a concern for them, that people were saying you did it afterwards, and people were gone, and there was none on TV. So are there any considerations for future meetings on this side? No? Okay. Let's, can I get a resolution?
Resolved that the board of education township high school district 208 county Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering, do I get to read all these?
Yes.
Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, and collective negotiation.
Second.
Mr. Raska?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.